Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the December 12th city council meeting. It'll be actually be our last meeting for 2023. So we're delighted, no, I'm sorry, for December. I'm trying to, that is 2023, we'll get it right in a minute. A little slow, I'm stuck in 2022 right now, I think so. But anyway, we're delighted you're here and we're going to begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings. And that is by asking God's grace on this, this gathering. So I'd like, I'd like to ask our friend Jimmy Elder from First Baptist, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. May I take one point of personal privilege?
Yes, sir, please do.
On, on Thanksgiving evening at 5:30, I was in a head-on collision on Manchester Expressway. Somebody came across the median and hit me. And I bury people in less accidents than that. I'm very fortunate to be here and very grateful. But I want to tell you, our paramedics, our police department, and our sheriff's department all responded. They responded with such care, such empathy, such grace, and such professionalism that I was absolutely blessed. I felt safe through the whole experience. And I just want to say to council and say to our law enforcement people and our paramedics, how much I appreciate what they did. I am living proof of their good work and of their being there and their doing what needed to be done. And I could not have asked for better care or for a better approach to every one of us who were there. So my, my blessings upon them and my gratitude for them. Thank you for that moment. Would you bow with me as we pray? Lord, we have so much for which to be thankful. We have each other, we have life, we have people who protect us and care for us. We have people who make decisions on our behalf that represent us in this government. We have a season of the year when, whether Christmas or Hanukkah or whatever we are celebrating, we find your grace and a very special presence of your love at this time of year. So we lift before you our hearts with gratitude and with joy. And we lift before you, this council and others who take care of us and who are part of this community. And we ask for your wisdom and your blessing. And we lift before you a new year that lies ahead, that it may be filled with success and with blessings and with good things. And in this week of Advent, as we think of the term peace, we ask that you bring peace to your world, peace to our hearts, peace to all the things that are a part of our lives. In your name, we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Jimmy, thank you. And I'll tell you, from the community, we are delighted that you have recovered so nicely from that, that accident. It's a reminder to all of us that life is short.
It is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, usually I lead the pledge of allegiance, but today we're going to do it a little bit different. We've got a young man in the audience who we're, we're kind of squeezing him in because he, we're running out of time to recognize our young folks that have done such a tremendous achievement this year. Kevin Green Jr. has qualified and attained the rank of Eagle Scout, I believe, as of the 20th of November. And so I'm going to ask him if he will lead us in the pledge and then share with us a little bit about what he has gone through to attain that rank. Mr. Green?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Green, welcome and congratulations on an outstanding achievement. Tell us a little bit about your project.
What, my project was creating an art gallery in the Civic Center for the Muskogee County School District Art Program.
Absolutely. Collaborated, I believe, with the Columbus Consolidated Government and Muskogee County School District.
Yes.
And if those of you, for those of you that have not had an opportunity to go visit, it's in the Civic Center. And if you have an opportunity to go take a look at this incredible outlet for some amazing artists that we have in the school district, you really, really need to, to check it out. And I believe your scout master is here, isn't he? Master G? Why don't you come up front with this young man, sir? Now, this is, uh, this is not something that's very easy to achieve. So we, we just wanted to know if you wanted to say a few quick words about this young man's efforts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Again, my name is Justin G. and I do humbly serve as the scout master for Troop 69 chartered out of the Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church where our pastor Reverend Dave Fleck III. Kevin is our, um, my wife and I counted it up last night. Kevin is our eighth Eagle Scout since 2015 out of Troop 69.
Wow.
And for those of you that are Eagle Scouts or was involved in scouting, for those of you that don't know, this is masters level work. It's, it's almost equivalent to a capstone course in college or a senior project at some of our more academically challenging schools here in the school district. Kevin decided to do this project solely on his own based off an experience that he had an opportunity to take part of up at the Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport where some of his artwork was displayed for all travels, both domestic and international, to see and view. He wanted to bring that here to his own, his own community here in Columbus. He did an amazing job. He collaborated with, with the, with the school board. He collaborated with the consolidated government and he was able to pull this off honestly in unbelievable record time. I don't think I could have done it if this was a task that I had. So this was very, very amazing and very important. It's going to have a long, long legacy here in our city for our youth, for generations to come. So I think this is a project, and in fact, it's being recommended to represent our area, our district nationally as the Eagle Scout Project of the Year for this year, so.
Fantastic. Kevin, we are all extremely proud of you. And I know, by the way, Kevin's proud beaming mother is our school board chair, Pat Hughley-Green. And I believe his uncle wants to make a comment about it.
Well, I, I just wanted you all to know and those watching by television to know that Kevin Green Jr., we know him as KJ, is my nephew. And he is a, an extremely intelligent young man, well-accomplished, and I'm, I'm very proud of him. And yes, his mother, Pat Hughley-Green, my sister is in the back along with my wife, Carolyn Hughley. But Kevin, I want you to know that I'm very proud of him.
Thank you.
Kevin, congratulations. We look forward to great things from you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
With all the, all the news and all the stories about young people doing negative things, it's exciting to see there's still a number of folks, a number of scouts, a number of parents that are pouring into these young people in a positive way. So we congratulate them. One more point of personal privilege for the, from the mayor is we want to invite to the podium, we've got some visitors apparently from the North Pole. And I believe they've made this trek to Columbus before. So if the elves want to make their way to the front for a moment. Merry Christmas.
My name is Sharon Byrne. This is my sister Carol Hansen, the washer. She washed all my dishes while I was baking forty pies.
Oh, my gosh.
And twelve of them was in this basket. And they're gone. And you know where they went? The mayor took them. He saw them, took them back there and ate every one of them.
They're pretty good, too.
I'm just kidding. I made twelve pies, I'm not kidding about that. And each, ma'am, you get a piece. Your, uh, your assistant back there gets a piece. Mayor Pro Tem gets a piece. Mr. Hughley gets a piece, the manager in the city attorney gets them. And Lisa, Pam, Chris, and Mike back there with TV, and all of them are counselors. And Lucy, you get a piece if your boss lets you have it. It's seventy-two pieces. If you cut one slice, six slices of pie, you get seventy-two pieces. I think seventy-two pieces would be, fill y'all up. And then, Mrs. Thomas, we really appreciate all the years you have been on the council and how hard you've worked. And I know that your brother's taking care of you like I take care of my sister. So if he wants a piece, you give him a piece, you share a piece. And ma'am, you're in trouble by saying.
I'm not surprised.
He whispered in my ear, and boy, that's wrong, he whispered in my ear.
You sure that wasn't my wife?
Well, no, she, this is too pretty, too sweet. But she wants a couch. And he said, if you can't find a couch in this house, it's gone. Gene would have sold your cheap sofa. But go get a sofa for Christmas.
We'll see if he can fit it down to ten.
But we all love you, we really appreciate all your work. And I appreciate y'all letting us come and visit y'all on this special day.
Well, y'all, y'all go to the hospitals and you, and you share a lot of Christmas joy with the
We did, and we're trying to get back next year maybe.
With the children, and y'all have done things in this community for
COVID got us stopped on that one.
Many years, but we appreciate what you do this time of year.
I go to St. Paul tomorrow.
Ma'am?
I go to pre, see, see the preschool at church tomorrow, St. Paul.
Good deal.
I might be seventy-five, I might be a hundred pounds, but I'm still kicking.
There you go. Well, listen, thank y'all so much for bringing a little Christmas cheer to the council.
Y'all enjoy those pies. And if anything's left, please take them home. I don't want to look at another bone of that pie.
Thank you, Sharon, thank you, Carol. Counselor Huff?
I didn't get a chance to get on my mic. If I could get KJ to stand back up, please. I didn't want the moment to go by. I've watched you grow up. You come along behind my kids. My kids are twenty-nine and twenty-four now. And I just want to let you know how proud I am of you. I have seen the display. My wife and I both took time to look at everything. It was impressive, but the most impressive part is for anyone that does their homework to see what you've been through to become an Eagle Scout. My oldest brother, your mother, and aunt, they know my brother, excuse me, Charles. Charles went through scouting, he's still involved with working with scouting here in this, in the city. But it takes a lot of dedication. And you go about your work kind of quietly. Mama's been there pushing, daddy's been there pushing everybody. So I just want to take time to say thank you, let you know. So when I see you again, I'll give you a handshake. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is, we have a proclamation for Mr. Paul Pierce. And I know Mr. Pierce is hard at work rehearsing for tuna Christmas. So Danielle Varner is here, I think, on his behalf. And I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem to read it. Ms. Varner, if you want to come to the podium, we'll.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to read the proclamation for Paul Pierce. It reads as follows. Whereas Paul R. Pierce is one of the longest-serving theatrical producers in the country with professional career that has spanned forty-six years and more than five hundred productions. Excuse me. Whereas Paul has led the Springer Opera House as producing artistic director for thirty-five years, taking the State Theater of Georgia to new artistic heights while expanding its audience and influence throughout the nation. And whereas, under Paul's leadership, the Springer conducted major facility expansions and historic preservation projects, establishing the Springer as a leader in, in Columbus economic tourism and film industry development. And whereas, under Paul's leadership, House Bill 1151 passed in both the House and the Senate, officially naming the Springer Opera House Theater as the State Theater of Georgia, signed into law by Governor Zell Miller in 1992. Whereas Paul was awarded the Governor's Award for the Arts by Governor Nathan Deal in 2012, making him among the first arts leaders in the state to be nominated and selected for this prestigious honor. Whereas Paul has directed and produced more than three hundred comedies, dramas, and musicals in the past thirty-five years at the Springer. And whereas, a Rome, Georgia native with a bachelor fine arts degree from the University of Georgia, Paul is an equity actor who has performed in over one thousand American and Canadian cities with stock, regional, and touring and children's theater companies. And whereas, Paul is the author of nine plays and the Springer Ghost Book. Now therefore, our mayor, Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, as Paul R. Pierce Day.
Thank you.
Danielle, we're sorry Paul couldn't be here, but we appreciate you taking a few moments to allow us to, uh, we didn't, I didn't hear and I don't know that council heard about the celebration. So I apologize for not being there. But certainly his, uh, his record of performing in the arts and pushing forward the arts in Columbus deserves to be recognized.
Thank you all. He hates he couldn't be here today. He is in rehearsal. We have a show tonight for our volunteers. And y'all come and see him, this is his swan song. It's his last performance. And Tuna Christmas has been running for over twenty years. So y'all come check him out. Thank you.
If you come up, I've got the proclamation for you. All right, before we go to the city attorney's agenda, I wanted to make a comment. We actually put out a press release yesterday evening. Subsequent to the audit that was presented, it had identified the possibility of undeposited or, or uncollected or, or just missing, it was labeled all three, money up to the tune of about forty-five million dollars. Well, obviously, when we get any kind of audit in, in fact, I think it was Counselor Tucker that said, "An audit's just a piece of paper unless you follow up, start, start working on the shortcomings." So it did put, point out some shortcomings that we have got to address. But the forty-five million dollars, I think, is what's stuck in the minds of a lot of people in our community. So I had asked the finance director and the deputy city manager over finance to begin to try to look into this information. It was provided at the time that the, the audit was presented. And I, I, I'm not the finance guy, so I'm going to, in a few moments, I'm going to call Pam Hodge, WCA manager up here, to go through the process just so everybody in the public understands. I think with that amount of money, it's imperative that we try to notify the, the public as quickly as we can of what we discover. After the information that I have received from the deputy city manager and from the finance director, it's, it, it, that money is not missing. It is corresponding checks, canceled checks that have been, been provided to, to a number of people, including myself. And, and that money has all been deposited. So I'm all, she's on the city manager's agenda, but I'm going to call Pam Hodge up now to, to address the process used. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that this presentation be held until January the ninth. As we have, this council has said, we will address the audit itself. And I request that this presentation be held until that time.
Well, Counselor, I, I understand, and I don't typically push back or take exception with counsel. But in this particular instance, because of the significant amount of money that we're talking about, this will be limited just to that piece of the audit. And I would also contend that the audit itself was made public when the auditor presented it. There is, I think, a follow-up through an investigation piece that, that is coming on the night.
Would you ask her to wait until we decide this question?
Well, I, with all due respect, ma'am, I, I have, I have decided I'm going to ask her to speak to the
Well, I move that this position, this presentation be held until January the ninth.
Well, and I, I'm going to refer to the city attorney, but I don't think I'm even, I don't have to even call the question because this is a meeting that is controlled and run by the mayor. This is something that I am putting on the mayor's agenda because I think it's significantly important that the people of this community here and don't go another month wondering if there's forty-five million dollars missing and how did we, how did we come up with that number? So the, the importance is in trying to make sure that the public sees the process used to determine whether or not that money was
Mr. Mayor, there, I believe there is a legitimate motion on the table that has to be dealt with, and I move that we do that promptly.
Do I need to deal with the motion? And I'm still going to override it and, because I would, I would decide frankly not to sign the Where are you? There you go.
Uh, yes, sir, you can deal with the motion as a matter of record, but then you still preside over the meeting. And if there is a speaker and a presentation, then it'll be part of the record.
All right, well, there's a motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor, I object to this.
I understand.
Under Robert's Rules of Order, in order for you to do that, there has to be a legal reason for you to do that. And we have not been presented with any legal reason. We've been presented with your feelings about it. But I, I don't know that there is, there's nothing in the city charter, nor in the resolutions, nor in the ordinances of the city that say that the mayor can overrule a, a motion that is put before this council and, and needs to be voted on. And I would request that we vote on this motion before we go any further.
I'd be glad to make it part of the record. There's a motion, a second to delay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all in favor, say, raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
Motion, all against, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three.
That is, yes, to the, to the motion, you may. But that mo, that vote is inconclusive.
So for January, I know we're going to discuss January. I think this is still important to hear now.
Raise your mic.
I still want to have a discussion in January. There's more information we want. I still think it's fair to hear this topic now to address the concerns. I want to hear the position. If they're wrong, we'll figure it out. Let them take their stance and then we'll come back later and say you're wrong. Or we can come back later and say, hey, we, we confirmed what you said was right. But I don't understand why we would not let them talk.
Because this council said we will do this on January the ninth.
I, I, my
That we will have the discussion about the audit on January the ninth.
All due respect, to correct you, this council said they would deal with the investigative piece on the ninth because we had a, a, a finance director who's going to be away from the office until January.
So that, that is correct. For that investigation, yes, for January. For this, my understanding is we would discuss it this week as we were anticipating that finance internal audit would try to reconcile the numbers and get us an update this week.
And, and I think counsel will find, this is not a rebuttal. This is not a give and take. This is, this is simply an explanation of process used to be able to identify whether or not, in fact, forty-five million dollars was missing. So Counselor Crabbe to the motion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason why I object to this is because we're picking one portion out of the whole report and we're discussing one thing. They're all interconnected and they all relate to each other, and they're all intertwined. And I said it last week when they were trying to do something about integrated waste and give us bits and pieces at a time. I think that the citizens of Columbus, Georgia deserve to hear and see the whole picture at one time. And that is what I thought we had agreed to last week when we said that we would postpone the presentation from Trauman Peppers until January ninth so that everybody could see everything at the same time. And that is not what's happening. We put things on hold until that presentation could be, could be made. And we also put it on hold because Angelica was not going to be able to respond before January ninth. She has that report already. She can re, she's reviewing it and she's going to be able to respond. I think this presentation could wait until the whole thing, all the responses, all, and all the presentations are made on January ninth. And that's when we deal with it as a whole, not bits and pieces.
Well, I appreciate your opinion. I disagree. I would, Counselor Davis, I'll let you speak and then I'll make a comment.
Yes, Mayor, I just, I know there's some fundamental disagreements, but just keep in mind, the reason I think it's inappropriate is that we're still in, going through an investigation. And where the council is still collecting data and information. And even some of the arguments probably posed here today, from what I see, will probably still needs to go through a verification process that hasn't happened and taken place yet. This is just like Congress going through hearings right now. That was, last week was the first phase. There's still more to come that we're still trying to understand and grasp this. There's, there's a final report that will ultimately come. And getting to that is going to go into the next year. And it's just continuing to layer after layer. And what I really don't like is that it, it, I don't want this to be a perception that the internal auditor's office and the compliance office is being discredited or challenged. And you know, it's, I, I think it's inappropriate at this point and that we should collect all the information, get all the data, and this is part of it. This should go in a file. We're getting this. It should go in a file and we should continue to get the reports. And then we could add it all up. But at the end of, end of all this, there needs to be an action plan to fix the failures. Okay? And I don't think anybody's denying that. But you can play on words about millions, whether you can use the word missing, you can use the word not collected, you can use the word unworked, you can use the word unprocessed, you can use the word delinquencies. You can use the word lost due to the fact that we just don't know who these people are out there from way back many years ago. And then you've got the statute of limitations. So I think it's going to be all confused. But at the end of the day, I do not want the perception that's being implemented that there's a, that the internal auditor and the compliance office is being discredited and, uh, challenged.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I will tell you that this is not a, this is not discrediting anybody. This is simply, the public was informed at a, at an audit presentation that forty-five million dollars was in question. And this government, and my, I'm a little surprised I'm the only one or one of a few that feels this way. When you have forty-five million, no, you may not. If we have forty-five million dollars that is in question in our community and then we go through a process to make sure that our community is, is assured or at least believes that this money has been deposited. or at least believes that this money has been deposited, and I'll point something else out, this is a normal process of an audit. Now, this audit's a little bit unusual, because council has hired an investigator, a former prosecutor, to, to do as, an investigation in conjunction with the audit. The audit was presented, so the audit was identified as being complete, we're not gonna wait to start addressing some of the items, some of the things, and you're right, some of the things that were in the audit have to be fixed, those things are gonna be worked on too. We're gonna work through every piece of it, and then when the investigation comes through in, uh, in January, gonna do the same thing, we're gonna look at anything that has merit that is brought forward by the investigator and address it. This is totally in order, this is a follow-up, because we didn't, we didn't have the information in enough time in advance to be able to provide this when it was presented. Now, as soon as we could get a, we, we, we pulled some people together and said, how do we either, if this is our issue, we own, we're gonna own it, and we're gonna come up with a way to fix it, to fix the challenge, but if it's not correct, we've got to let the public know. So that is why I am pushing to have the deputy city manager simply refer to the process that was used, so that the public understands that the money that we were afraid might not be accounted for, has been accounted for, and there's visible physical proof. So that's what we're doing, we're not discrediting anybody, we're doing our duty as fiduciaries of the, uh, of the money that, uh, the citizens have paid in his taxes. Uh, Counsel, Counsel Begley, anything else to add?
Uh, Counsel Crabbe, I one-hundred percent agree, the information should have been presented all at the same time. Unfortunately, the internal audit, for whatever reason, came out last week, and so we do well with the process, to follow the process, to, to hear both sides of it, but I, I, I wish.
We heard from Angelica last week.
We actually cut her off.
In length, no, we did not. We did not cut off Angelica, we heard her in length.
Well, what you, Counsel Crabbe, your light's not on, and you're welcome to get cute, but I.
He's just, he's talking to me. She went down to talk to Mr. Long.
So, so to clarify, we did not give, Angelica did not have the time.
Counsel Begley, make sure you address me.
Sorry. To clarify, Angelica did not have time to review the information, and so we did not follow a normal process, for whatever reason, we did not follow the normal process, and we're trying to get as close to that process now as normal. I, I, I don't like deviating from the process, I think processes are strong. Again, I would have loved for all this to come out in January at once, for whatever reason, it didn't, and so now we're, we're trying to piecemeal this together, which I agree is unfortunate, um, but it, it's, it's where we are.
Well, I tell you, we, we've got some other folks that wanna speak, and we'll let you speak afterwards, but the vote was inconclusive, so I'm gonna move to the deputy city manager and let her walk through this, so that we, our, the public understands what we're, we're talking about. Deputy City Manager Hodge?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, I would like to thank the, the mayor and the city manager for allowing me to be on the agenda today to provide a follow-up to information that you heard at the last council meeting. I personally felt the need to respond. Every dollar of the forty-five point one million dollars can be documented with a deposit, with a bank statement, with a cash receipt, and with a canceled check.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the audience, we, we talked about this last time, we wanna end the, end the year on a high note, so no outbursts, please, during any of the presentations. Thank you.
After the notebook was passed out, this notebook was passed out by the internal auditor on December fifth, it became very apparent to me that the forty-five point one million dollars that was labeled during the presentation as "missing money" was not correct, as well as confidential tax information was being shared, even though the finance director had warned the internal auditor that this information is restricted. I was also disappointed, after quickly glancing at the supplemental attachments provided on December fifth, that the claim of "missing money" could have been rectified if only this attachment would have been provided to the finance director as she requested. This documentation is readily available by reviewing transaction history, cash receipts, and bank statements. It is very unfortunate that this information has been presented to the public without any validation that this information was correct, no validation of this information. There are a lot of people who have a complete distrust in government, and no matter how much that we document that every check making up that forty-five point one million dollars was deposited in the bank, there will still be some that question that accuracy. I contacted the city manager on December sixth, after a sleepless night, pretty much a sleepless week, I will have to say, to request to be on the city council agenda today. I also thought it would be helpful to meet with the internal auditor. A meeting was scheduled late on Wednesday, December sixth, to include the mayor, the city manager, myself, the finance director, and the internal auditor. I'm also glad that the city attorney, Counselor Davis, and Counselor Tucker attended this meeting. I was surprised to learn that this information had not been validated at all. The fraud hotline is extremely valuable asset to any organization, whistleblowers should be protected, but never, never should you take what a whistleblower says as true without validating the information. For any audit, either internal or external, transactional data should always be sampled and tested. I'm gonna walk through a few slides to outline the process that is used for this lockbox account, to demonstrate and to show that this is cash in the bank. This was the finding, forty-five point one million dollars of unprocessed transactional activity that has been catalogued in Excel, known as CCG Lockbox. This activity has not been banked, details appear in a supplemental attachment, this is completely false. Forty-five point one million dollars does not represent unprocessed transactional activity, all lockbox transactions have been deposited in the bank, and a sampling to document this has been provided to the internal auditor. Supplemental attachments were not provided to the finance director until it was passed out at city council meeting on December fifth, and no validation was done to substantiate this whistleblower claim. The business license process related to lockbox Excel file only, and that is all I'm here to address, is this lockbox file, this forty-five point one million dollars. Either an occupation tax return is mailed to the bank lockbox or to the city's revenue office. The check is deposited by the bank, if it is mailed to the bank lockbox, or by the revenue division, if it is mailed to the revenue office. These bank deposits are recorded in a general ledger account, in a balance sheet account that we call Lockbox twenty-one seventy-five, it is a general ledger account. The transaction is a debit to cash, because it went to the bank, and a credit to this lockbox account, general ledger account. These deposits are logged on an Excel spreadsheet, known as Lockbox, for each fiscal year. This file, this Lockbox GL account, is used specifically to track occupation tax returns by businesses through the bank lockbox or those mailed to the revenue office. The file includes batch date, process date, receipt number, batch ID number from the bank, cash receipt ID number, which is the city's general ledger cash receipt transaction, a journal entry number, an account number, and the total amount paid. Generally, lockbox licenses are processed in the order in which they are received. If all required documents are provided, a business license is processed in the business license system and mailed to the business. The revenue is moved by journal entry from the GL lockbox account into the revenue account periodically as licenses are processed. This general ledger entry, general, journal entry is recorded on that locks box Excel file. The internal auditor has claimed that the journal entries which are reclassifying funds from the lockbox to the revenue account is missing money, this is false. The only way that it gets into and recorded into this general ledger account is because the cash was deposited in the bank. The funds in the general ledger lockbox account are funds already deposited in the At year end, there is a process where there is a journal entry to reclassify all remaining funds from this general ledger lockbox account to revenue, as this does constitute revenue for that particular fiscal year, even if the business license is not processed. Currently, there are approximately five hundred returns that are still pending to be processed. They could be ones that haven't, that are still in queue, they could be ones who have received a letter that says you didn't in, include specific information, that totals about two and a half million, but again, these funds are deposited, can be documented by bank statements, cash receipts, deposit slips, and canceled checks. Conclusion, there is no missing money, there is no unrealized revenue liability, this forty-five point one million dollars is in the bank, documented, receipts have been produced and provided to the internal auditor, which she has not responded to me. And I want to be clear, that this presentation is only to respond to the one finding that seemed to create the most publicity in the newspaper. There are improvements, granted, that need to be made in the revenue division. There were tasks that were not completed, that is not being disputed. There are delinquent businesses who should have renewed, but did not. Code enforcement is visiting each business. There were three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven businesses who did not renew their license in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three. To date, nine hundred and fifty-three of those three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven accounts have either renewed, closed their account, are located out of Muskogee County, where code enforcement has no jurisdiction, or they are no longer operating their business. We have issued two hundred and sixteen warnings to date for businesses to become into compliance. Code enforcement is continuing to work those, that list of delinquent accounts, but this forty-five point one million dollars is not delinquent accounts, these are returns that were remitted to either the city lockbox or the bank lockbox, and those funds are deposited in the bank and can be documented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, we, we have some challenges in that area. The audit turned that up, and I expect that we'll hear some more when the second report comes in January. It was just imperative, in, in my mind, that we let our citizens know the actual status of an amount of money that was, was that large. Counselor Huff?
Good morning, thank you for the update. Um, I personally had a conversation with my pastor, Pastor Hart, at St. James AME, and I visited Pastor Gordon on Sunday to have Christmas lunch with his church members. Everywhere I went, the conversation was forty-five point one million dollars. In my working with you and the finance team over my time here, uh, we know we have challenges in many, many departments, we need additional hands on deck to get the job done, but I trusted the fact that you all stated no one had stolen anything, and that the money was in the bank. So that was the, the, kind of the narrative that I took with me all weekend. Pastor Gordon is usually on the road, he said he'd be here if he could, good to see you. Uh, and I explained it all weekend, basically, like you just presented, that monies went into a lockbox, I didn't understand the lockbox system, but that's where I was told the monies were. At some point in the future, someone would explain to us the lockbox system, and you just did. The two point five million was the number I took with me all weekend, anyone that spoke with me during the weekend, I trusted that we had an issue over two point five, where is it, where, you know, what's going on? The presentation says that that money, the monies are in the lockbox, just like the rest, some have not, uh, some businesses have not, uh, applied like they should have, or paid, applied and paid. So, you know, thank you, I just, I just needed the public, I'm just glad the public needed to hear it, because my comment was, if we had forty-five point one million dollars missing, and I stated this to the mayor and others, the city would have recalled all of us, the whole council, the mayor, everybody would be recalled over forty-five million dollars. So it had to be some type of system that we didn't understand, so thank you for that. Moving forward, uh, I did mention the other day, and I'll mention it later, you know, that we need to look at many, many departments and see if we need to get temporary hands on deck to get the job done, because in this environment now, uh, I spoke with the city manager last year about the fact that we are fortunate if we have an employee to come on board and stay five years. He is, he stated to me, if we have an employee, a new employee that comes in and stays seven years, that's equivalent to the employee that did thirty years in the past. So right now, I think we're averaging possibly three years, you know, three, three, three to five. So as we go through this new environment of business for government in Columbus, Georgia, we have to just get additional hands on deck when necessary, and try to get the job done for the taxpayers of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor, like I said, I think there's some fundamental disagreements and misunderstandings. I said last week in the presentation clearly that, from my perspective, I was not talking about things that have happened internally, I was talking about things that happen on the external, and I think a lot of the council members are still focused on that. And what we talked about here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, what we talked about here, we're not talking about twenty twenty-three, that's a year that's still playing out, we don't know, the last financial snapshot we got, we had a budget of fifteen, sixteen million dollars, somewhere in there, but we've only collected one point two, and we're halfway through the year, that's what was on that snapshot. And then you go back to sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, you add it all up, what we're talking about is used money, you used it in the budget somewhere, it's been used, it's been accounted for, it's been paid, it goes to our budgets, that's money that's been collected that you can actually use, it's not missing, okay? It's already been collected, but we collect. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that, and imply that we've got a one-hundred percent collection rate, we don't, we do not, and that certainly not's what's being said here. That money's been spent, it's, it's, uh, it's, or it's sitting today, it's sitting in the general fund, it's sitting in the fund balance, it's sitting in restricted accounts. I mean, that money is tangible, but it's not the city's money, and fully collected to be used until it, it's in your hands. So whether it's two million, four million, six million, ten million, fifteen million, twenty million, thirty-five, forty-five, maybe even fifty-five, we don't know, we're not there yet, the, the investigation is not complete, there's still millions that have not been collected.
That, that would be considered delinquent accounts?
I said that earlier, yes.
This money that's being referenced is not delinquent accounts, this money is people who have submitted a return.
It's money we've already spent, right?
And already collected. What's in the budget for this current fiscal year, you're correct, it's about fifteen million dollars that we anticipate from occupation tax, which is not due until April first. So typically, throughout our fiscal year process, the revenue that we collect between July and April is people who did not complete their col, their returns that was due April first of twenty-three. So that budget, fifteen million dollars, those, those returns are not due until April first.
I understand, and that's being.
So we should see those revenues come in between April and June, is typically when the majority of those funds are.
If I'm not mistaken, we're having a conversation here.
Let me interject one quick thing.
Okay.
I, I agree with counsel that this is the kind of discourse that needs to take place in January, that's not what they were, the only laser-focused point they were making was the forty-five million dollars, so, so there are, and you're right, there are a lot of other angles to this. This was not an attempt to provide a rebuttal of the, of, of anything, it, it is simply to address the most glaring issue. It, it is simply to address the most glaring issue that came out in the public's mind. So I agree this needs to be done. I don't know that, in, in keeping with counsel's wishes, that this is the appropriate place for a detailed discussion on things that will come up in the, in the investigation.
Thank you, Mayor. The, look, what I said, I don't want the perception that the Internal Auditor's Office, the Compliance Office, is being discredited or challenged, okay? So I won't, it, it needs to be made clear. If we're going to have this conversation today, which, Counselor Begley, is not part of our normal process. The normal process is that the oddity is given a time period to respond. One of the reasons we initiated investigation was because of the, uh, uh, feedback that we were getting about obstruction and hindrance and the information and documentation and data not being produced, okay? And that perhaps might be some of the struggle that's here today. But I do know that the oddity has been given plenty of time to respond. We do have a response from the oddity. To say that they haven't been given a time or the appropriate manner of submitting the documentation according to the process is wrong. This, what we're doing, I've never seen this before, after our audits have come, uh, and been presented to us. But I understand the reasoning behind it, and, and Mayor, it's valid. Okay, it's valid. But I don't want the Internal Auditor's Office and the Compliance Office to be discredited or challenged. And, and that's my point. The other side, if we're going to put this out here, the other side, because people are going to be confused by this, and there needs to be some direction.
And I think that that's what we were, we were trying to do. And I will tell you too, that, that you're, you're right. This was not a normal process. Typically, there is an exit interview where the auditee, which is us, is, is allowed to, and encouraged to work with the auditor. Say, all right, well, let's look at these, and let's see what we're going to be dealing with, and then we'll, we'll move forward. And, and that, that's, that didn't happen. There was some, there was some information to include that, that ledger that was placed on desktops at the presentation. Normally, that is given ahead of time for a response. And, and all of this, and I think that's the only point we were making, is that had that followed the normal process, all of this could have been addressed then, so.
And you're right. And the other thing that I, that I did this, this is not normal because we've got a continuing, we're still doing hearings, we've got a continuing investigation going.
Component. You had two separate things. One was the audit, one was the investigation.
But I did want to ask the deputy city manager one question. What we're talking about is money that's already been used, spent?
It's already money. It's already money that's been deposited in the bank.
And spent.
That was addressed in that ledger.
And we used in our budgets, our previous budgets, right?
No, some, some, some of it went back years.
No, I'm talking about, this money goes back years. It's not like today, okay? This goes back years. But that money has already been budgeted. It's been spent. We're in a new budget cycle. It's been accounted for. You used it. It's money you can spend. Am I right? It's, or today, it's sitting in the general fund, the fund balance, or some restricted fund. It's just a yes or no question.
The money is in the bank, was part of budget processes. It was not missing. It was this statement.
I'm talking about past chance.
Correct. It was money that's been budgeted and it's in the bank. It was, it's not missing.
We spent it.
It's not missing.
There's, there's, there's some of the, some of the funding, some of the funding went back, because I saw the, uh, the scans that showed the deposit slips, the, um, the, the cash offset, whatever you call it, and also the canceled checks. And we checked them. They, they sent me some files from going back to nineteen or twenty, because some of these that were in that ledger went back that far. So they were actually checking on information, doing samples from, uh, from that. I, no, I, okay. Counselor Begley?
Just to re, so, so money is fungible, right? So if, if someone pays, we don't follow that exact dollars, right? So that dollar could go in, in reserves. It could be spent. And so that's why it's difficult to say, has it been spent? Because money is fungible. And so it's, we don't track a specific payment to where that money goes. We, it goes to the bank and that money is disbursed as needed.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Thomas?
One of the statements that has been made today is that, uh, the reason that you felt this, uh, report was necessary was that the finance director did not have an opportunity to respond to, uh, the auditee, the auditor's report. Has the auditor been given this information?
We met with the auditor last Wednesday. I, I showed her all the, how the cash receipts. I showed her the transactional history. I showed her examples of canceled checks, examples of, um, bank statements, examples of cash receipts. I sent her over the weekend what she requested when she came into the office on Thursday, and the finance department was five, um, to pull five. And she produced twenty pages of, and I'm referencing, this entire back section of this book.
So if the, if the auditor has been given this information, why was she not invited today to respond to this information?
And I don't, I, I, I don't really want to get into the conversation about the auditor's response. I will tell you that she was invited and encouraged.
Well, you're saying that the reason we're doing this is because the auditee did not, was not given the chance to respond. And it seems to me that if that's the reason for this, then the auditor ought to also be given the chance to respond.
And she's, she's welcome to respond. We have, we have tried to have.
Did you ask her to respond?
Not, not to. As a matter of fact, I did. When I told her, when we had the meeting on Wednesday, my objective was.
Did you ask her to respond at this meeting?
Allow me to finish, and I'll tell you what I asked her. When we had the meeting on Wednesday, we had, I told her, I said, I would like both of you standing up there so that everybody knows that we're all united on what we're, we're, on, all we were trying to do was close a knowledge gap. Because when they talked about the ledger, the ledger was believed by the auditor to represent something that it actually represented something different. So the auditor's been engaged, and the auditor has indicated that they are not interested in being engaged. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to get into the discussion about the auditor. I'm simply going to tell you that this information, and that's not the only reason we're doing this. The reason we're doing this is very simple. Somebody said that this government had, there was forty-five million, fifty, forty-five million dollars in question. And our responsibility to the public is to share that. If, if it's in question, if we can't find it, we have to own it immediately. But if, if it's there, we have to let the public know that the original information was mistaken. And, and, and that's, that's our obligation to the, to the citizens of this community. That's the only reason this was done. We're, we're going to have time to discuss this, I think, on the ninth. And I'm, I'm, I'm not inclined to continue to go around the table talking about this because we're not getting anywhere. We're, we're, we're here to discuss one specific aspect of, of a report that we did not have the opportunity, our folks didn't have the opportunity to prepare to make a, a correction when the audit was presented. Had that been allowed, this would not even be, there's no reason for this conversation to be had because it could have been addressed then.
The auditor did say that she did not validate this information because she said she didn't have access to the information. She didn't ask for any access. She has access to the Advantage Financial System. She has access to the Finance Department. She could have asked for bank statements. She could have asked for canceled checks.
I tried, I tried to when y'all were talking, asking about the auditor. So we'll, we'll save this for another discussion. I, I agree with you. And I, is this to something, Counselor Davis, other than the auditor and what they're providing? Okay.
I just wanted to add, uh, you know, and Counselor Tucker and I did have the opportunity, thank you, Mayor, to sit and observe in the meeting. It was my understanding that there's passwords and things that have to be used to get into some of these certain accounts. It was my understanding that that password was not available or, or, uh, someone, the auditor did not have access. The other thing was that when that meeting, when I left the meeting, there was another part of the verification and doing samplings and going through all this information. I, I don't see it. I'm, I'm assuming that that is happening now and still is in progress, so that does need to be added to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I'm going to reiterate my statement at the beginning that we needed to see this as a whole picture because, see, now you're wanting us to limit this conversation, and you're saying that funds are, that you wanted to have this presentation because there were funds in question. Well, there are still funds in question because if we collected forty-five million dollars and we have as many delinquent business licenses and alcohol licenses out there over the years, then we've collected funds and we didn't deliver a product. And so, yes, we still have funds in question, and we'll discuss that in January.
I agree with you. All right, let's, the city manager, we ready to move on? Pam, thank you. We'll move on to the city attorneys.
Let me just take the opportunity to thank Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge for this update. And, um, I, I think, she indicated, she called me multiple times on last Wednesday morning and said she did not sleep at all. And I know that we've, and, and I'm going to move on, but we've talked about samples. And I said to the internal auditor, I'm all for a hundred percent. Don't just sample. Do a hundred percent. And with a one hundred percent, and we've got the bank statements, we've got the validated deposit slips, we've got transactional, and we are ready to deliver on a hundred percent. The forty-five point one million was deposited in the bank. I'm done.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. You gave me the note and I forgot it. Motion and second to approve the minutes. Are there any edits, any discussions, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Now, Mr. City Attorney.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We've got a number of business items to cover. First item up for a vote today is the zoning matter. It's at three oh one Forty-second Street.
There's a motion to approve, uh, three, three oh one Forty-second Street. Is there a second? All right, there's a motion and a second. Any, any comments to the motion? Hearing none. Chris, please cue that. And counselors, you can enter your votes, please. Okay, that's approved.
All right, next item ready for a vote is forty seventy Macon Road, Benjamin Foster Zoning.
Motion and a second to approve item two. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none. Chris, please cue it. I think we're missing one more. Who we missing? There we go. That's, that's approved.
All right. Then the last zoning hearing to vote on is thirty-nine fourteen, thirty-nine twenty-two, Buena Vista Road.
Motion to approve item three and a second. Any discussion to that motion? All right, Chris, please cue it. All right, and that's approved.
All right, Mr. Gibson, that has passed. Thank you for being here. Next item up, Mayor, is the promotion procedures, Columbus Fire and EMS. It's ready for a vote.
Motion and a second to approve the promotion procedures ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, counselors, please vote. And that's, that's approved.
All right. Next item up is the Muskogee County Prison Promotion Policy Change. It's ready for a vote.
Motion and a second to approve item five. Any discussion? All right, Chris? That's approved.
More than that has been approved. Thank you for being here. The next item, I think Counselor Tucker wants to make an amendment on this, Mayor. The supplement increase for the, for Sheriff Countryman is what's on the table to be affected January one. And Counselor Tucker, do you want to make a motion to amend it to your new number?
Yes, I would like, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Counselor?
Um, I would like to make a motion to amend the total. I think, I'm trying to pull up the actual amount. But the new total would be fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Currently, I'm going to go into the, um, the actual ordinance and tell you what it states.
So that would substitute then fifty thousand nine sixty-three.
Instead of the forty-three.
Fifty-three instead of the forty-three thousand.
Yeah. So what, what we were doing was, um, getting the sheriff. We, we know how important it is, um, to pay our public safety officers, you know, a competitive salary. And we're bringing the sheriff up equal to the chief of police, which the chief of police is being paid one seventy-six eighty-eight and some change. So the fifty thousand will equal up to the one seventy. We had an incorrect calculation.
Counselor Allen?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Fay, what happens if, if and when a new sheriff is elected to the salary? Does it revert back to, uh, a starting salary and coincide with state law?
It will. It'll revert back based on the population of Columbus Muskogee at the time.
Okay.
But you still have the authority at any time to appropriate a subtle, a supplement to that salary.
Okay, but the supplement would be tied, would not be effective to the new person?
No, it would not. That's, uh, depends on the person taking office and what the council wants to say as any supplement.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Counselor Begley? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, and I actually wanted to, to reiterate that this is attached to, um, Sheriff Rick Countryman. And like Attorney Fay said, that we can decide to do a supplemental, um, ordinance as we are doing right now. But it's only tied to, um, our current sheriff. And when he is no longer the sheriff, this is null and void.
All right.
All right, did we get a vote on the amendment motion?
No, we did not. I'm sorry. There's a motion to amend, uh, as stated by the counselor. And there is a second. Uh, any, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, this is just the amendment.
All right.
It's just the amendment.
Right.
Did we get a vote?
We did. It's, it's, it's approved.
All right, we'll bring that back then for our final vote in January.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a question. How does this, um, supplement, this supplement makes the sheriff and the police chief equal? Where does the fire chief enter into that? Is, is the same as this?
No, we don't know. We'd have to have HR give you the salary.
He would probably be interested where his sits to.
Nobody knows?
Their salary won't change.
Not unless counsel asks for some sort of an increase.
An increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. The, um, last thing we've got, Mayor, is a request for an executive session on real estate acquisition and disposal. And there'll be some folks, uh, I think, traveling to Columbus for that matter. But that's all we have right now.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, in reference to, just kind of piggyback on what Counselor Judy Thomas mentioned in reference to, um, our other public safety, um, officers. I think we were supposed to get a salary savings, um, presentation. I know it said the month of December, and we're at the last meeting and we don't have it. So we don't know what salary savings, um, or, um, budgetary savings that we had from the previous fiscal year. So I will. So I would like to ask if we could get, um, an update during January in reference to our salary savings in January ninth? I think it's gonna be a long meeting. Do you want it January ninth or the fourth?
If, if, if I, to update, um, we've, we've been talking with the chief. We've met with him, I think, three times, trying to work out, just make sure he understands. So he's got all the knowledge about the OLOS and, uh, and the number and make, so that he feels good about what he's, he's recommended. So we are planning on bringing that in January.
Is it gonna be January ninth or?
I don't know if we were gonna put it on the ninth. We're still meeting to try to get the numbers crunched so that we can try to use the, the salary savings he has in that area. The challenge with that is that, of course, there are other departments that don't have that salary savings. So his might be able to be budget neutral, which, but I don't know about the others.
Right, so I think that, um, getting that presentation, I would say probably that fourth Tuesday 'cause I think the second, that first meeting is gonna be a long meeting. Um, if we can get the update on the salary savings, um, and then we can have the conversations um, in reference to, uh, the pay for our other public safety, um, officers and do it with the, um, upcoming budget sessions to have that conversation. Yes, ma'am, all of them.
And, yeah, and I think that's the challenge. Because if, if there are salary savings within a department and you can give that increase within that department, it's a, it's a wash. But if you take salary savings from other departments and use it for, say, fire or sheriff, then what you've done is you've obligated those funds to position that there.
And let, and let me clear this up. Because the salary savers, savings is for us to get an overall picture of, you know, just how much we spent per department and within public safety. But I think during this budget session that we can talk about, um, paying increases. Because I know, I think, um, CPD, I think, uh, Chief Mathis had some concerns in reference to pay, so we need to have those discussions. I mean, it's not in particular to the salary savings. I think it's important for us to see the salary savings. That way we can determine when we start having those discussions in reference to the budget session.
And, and he has. We've been, we've been meeting and, uh, and he has expressed some, some concerns. He's, you know, he's, right now, he's not having a, a attrition issue. But he knows that, as we talked about, how, I think councillor Davis was saying, young folks just don't stick around very long anymore, so. But anyway, we will, we'll bring that to you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, all right, and, uh, we'll move on to the public agenda. Please remember the public agenda, you get five minutes. And I apologize in advance, I'm not being rude, but we're trying, gonna hold everybody to that five minutes. I will also remind you too that, uh, there's, please refrain from any outbursts or anything while folks are speaking. We're just asking, we're asking everybody to be respectful, uh, and, uh, and, and respect other people's, other people's viewpoints. All right, first, the first individual on public agenda, Ms. Ally Johnson, representing Columbus Animal Allies regarding the Columbus Animal Care and Control. Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Hello.
Just state your name and, and we've, we've gotten away from home addresses, but just say the city.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Ally Johnson. I live in Columbus and I'm with Columbus Animal Allies. I want to talk about Columbus Animal Care and Control and Transparency and Accountability. I know that Public Works Director Drell Short plans to present today about CACC. And the final slide on her PowerPoint states that the public has untrue, incomplete, and inaccurate information about animal control, and this causes a lack of trust. I could not agree more. And I would add, um, I'd like to talk about the source of some of this misinformation. Uh, at the city council meeting a year and a half ago, on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, CACC management was there to answer questions just like today. And councillor Crabbe asked, what happens when you get an injured animal after hours at CACC? Ms. Short said, quote, "If the veterinarian says take them straight to animal emergency, then we will do that." That's at timestamp four hours, five minutes, and eleven seconds to verify that quote. Um, she later said that she didn't say that. As some of you saw when you visited CACC recently, they definitely do not take them straight to animal emergency. Uh, you saw a dog named Bristol who sat on cement for three weeks with a bullet sticking out of her body and a leg visibly broken by a gunshot, who seemed to be in tremendous pain, according to councillor Kogle. Other animals have sat there for a week or longer, such as Pancake with a broken pelvis, Eleanor with a gaping abdominal wound from a tumor that burst, and Hemingway with a raging eye infection that a volunteer tried to diagnose and treat with donated medication on her own. Last week, you asked the Director of Finance, why didn't you come let us know there was a problem? CACC management not only did not come let you know there is a problem, they spun a fairy tale about taking the animals to animal emergency. Um, and by the way, the Georgia Animal Protection Act very clearly states, um, that this is the duty of anyone impounding an animal in Georgia to provide humane care and adequate and necessary veterinary services. Um, that's in your packet. Columbus Animal Allies formed and began making open records requests because we heard these statements CACC management was making and we wanted to find out the truth. At the same meeting in June twenty twenty-two, then interim Director of CACC, Katrina Pearson, failed to correct the assumption from council that part-time veterinarian, Dr. Hank Hall, does the euthanasia at CACC. She added that also some vet techs do it. We filed an open records request and learned that CACC does not and did not employ any state-licensed veterinary technician. The truth is, it's staff members with no veterinary schooling who are inserting the IVs or in some cases injecting the killing solution into the abdominal cavity of the animals. Um, and on that topic, let's look at an Animal Control Advisory Board meeting from June twenty twenty-three, which is on audiotape. Um, there are several advisory board members asked CACC management directly how euthanasia is done and if animals are always sedated or tranquilized first. Drell Short stated, the animals are tranquilized beforehand. A member, a board member asked if that is always done. CACC manager Kanita Hardnett-Johnson stated, that is always done. That's in your packet. Um, so we requested all the controlled substance forms. CACC is required by law to fill out when they euthanize animals from twenty twenty-three. These records received directly from the city show that no cats or wildlife, except one cat and one turtle, receive tranquilizer, and with dogs that buried by month. But anywhere from thirty to seventy percent of dogs did not receive tranquilizer. I hope that today we will finally receive a truthful and complete information about who does the euthanasia, whether they weigh animals or guesstimate weights to decide how much fatal plus solution to use, whether they use catch poles or muzzles, if the animals ever struggle or scream during the process, how death is confirmed, and how the bodies are disposed of, so we can finally get this all on the record. Finally, I do have one other question that I hope we can get an accurate and truthful answer to today. State law says that only a licensed veterinarian can administer a rabies vaccine in Georgia. That's on page six in your packet. Um, but the dates and the differences in handwriting, um, on some of the records that we have obtained, and you have samples of those in your packet, make it unclear who is actually doing the rabies vaccines at CACC. Um, can CACC management please explain who does the rabies vaccination, how it is done, and whether Dr. Hall signs the certificates ahead of time in bulk and leaves them at CACC for staff members to use when they administer the vaccines? Or does he sign each one himself at the time he personally administers the rabies vaccine to each animal? The public deserves to finally have a true, complete, and accurate picture of what is going on with animal control. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Ms. Teresa Elamine, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding evictions and lack of affordable housing. Ms. Elamine, welcome. And I think you know it's five minutes. And you don't have to give your street address, just give the, uh, city of your residence, along with your name, for the record.
Thank you. Teresa Elamine, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine oh seven. Um, I come before you once again to ask you to care. In this special season of caring, uh, I'm asking you to care about the suffering of so many in Columbus who lose their housing every month. The Sheriff's Department reports that between January and November thirtieth of this year, one thousand two hundred and fifteen evictions have been carried out in this city. In all of twenty twenty-two, there was one thousand two hundred and two. So, you know, we're running like better than one hundred evictions every month. When I first moved here, uh, thirteen years ago, I thought, when I would see the marshals gently handling people's things at Cross Creek Apartments, I kept thinking, gosh, there are a lot of evictions. Well, this is at a historic level in terms of evictions. My guess is that there have never been these many evictions on an annual basis. And since so many of you, I would say several of you, have affiliations with real estate, you're either property owners, brokers, you've been in real estate, you're developers, you sit on the city council as our elected officials. I can guarantee you that probably twice as many dispossessors have been filed. They're so backed up in the sheriff's office. They'll tell you, well, if you get, uh, if you lose in court in January, maybe we'll get to you by March or April. That's how backed up they are. But I must say, the municipal court is well-run. The clerk's office is well-run. They do a good job. And when you go before Judge Smith, you know he's gonna be fair. I've had to go before municipal court twice this year. And I wanna say to the citizens, when your landlord does you wrong, you can beat him. You can beat him in court if you file a counter complaint. You can beat him. I just beat my second landlord on November first. I'm living rent-free right now, trying to find another place. But you have to stand up and fight. And so what I want to do in this community is organize the renters to fight, to fight the slum lords, to fight the unscrupulous investors who come here from Nevada, New York, and everywhere, using companies up in Atlanta, Ram Partners LLC, and you name it, Pegasus. They're using companies in Atlanta and they have taken over Columbus. Your rent gets double when they take over. So we have got to stop what's going on, and it's on you. It's on you. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight. We got three cycles to make these changes based on who is deciding policy in this community. And I'm calling on the citizens to stand up to the real estate folks who are coming in here, taking over. They're taking over. And you can't get a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment for under twelve hundred dollars, pretty much, if you wanna live in a decent place. There are plenty of slum lords if you wanna live in a junk, uh, and they got enough nerve to evict people. So I'm just saying to the citizens and to all of you, the municipal court is doing a fair job, but it's the policies that allow these unscrupulous investors to do what they're doing that's causing this kind of suffering and is hurting the children. 'Cause when we get the count in a few weeks, you're gonna see the homelessness has increased. That's what this community has become. You gotta stop it. You gotta stop it.
Ms. Elamine, thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Sandy Gunnels regarding Columbus Animal Control. Welcome, Ms. Gunnels. And again, just state your name for the record and your city of residence.
My name is Sandy Wright Gunnels, and I live part-time in Columbus and part-time in Pine Mountain. Um, I grew up in Columbus, actually right down the street from Mayor Pro Tim, Gary Allen, and went through school with former councilman John House. I have a long history here in Columbus. Um, I married a gentleman who didn't share with me that he had already signed up to be a marine pilot um, till our third or fourth date. So I did leave Columbus but came back twenty-eight years ago, um, for retirement here. Um, I was a, I'm a proud Hardaway Hawk. I graduated from Columbus College with a degree in nursing. I then went on to FSU in Goda Masters in Nursing. And yes, I'm mad at the BCS, and I think Georgia should be also. Um, and I tell you this, um, to kind of get credibility for what I'm going to be bringing to you. After fifty-one years as a registered nurse, I feel like I know poop, okay? And that's primarily what we're gonna be talking about on this one. Um, we're gonna talk about parvo, and that is a highly contagious virus that animals, primarily dogs, the canine parvovirus, get. It causes severe, often fatal, disease in unvaccinated or partially vaccinated or incorrectly vaccinated puppies and dogs. It has an incubation period of three to seven days. So from the time, if an animal is going to, a dog is gonna get sick, from the time he is exposed or she, three to seven days, they will start exposed, um, start exhibiting symptoms if they're going to be sick. Um, obviously, I, you have a slide for the life cycle of parvo. You can look at that. Obviously, we'd rather prevent parvo than run around treating it. It's a deadly disease that can be prevented with very little effort. It's an expensive disease. Twenty-four hours at an, at the Auburn Small Animal Hospital for a parvo pup, trying to save them is anywhere from one thousand to two thousand dollars. Ask me how I know. Um, I'll be talking today about two key ways to prevent parvo. One is to vaccinate dogs appropriately. One is to keep areas that dogs are in clean. On your third slide, dog vaccinations, very rare and basically unheard of for an appropriately vaccinated dog to develop parvo. Per PAWS email and observer reports, CAC is using or has used expired vaccines, and dogs were, um, observed not receiving full-dose vaccines. And this was by PAWS employees, and they did write an email about this being concerned. The second is cleaning. Because dogs can come into CAC already infected with the virus unknown. It's very important to keep CAC clean. It's of ultimate importance. Parvoviruses are hard to kill. They can last two to ten years in the environment, depending on what the environment's made up of. Cleaning with water, no matter how hot, regular cleaners like Mr. Clean, soap will not kill parvo. This has been repeatedly observed in CAC. They're not using the non-use of any chemicals to the use of not appropriate chemicals for killing the parvovirus. You must use bleach, trifectin, or some of the specialty products, um, to kill parvo. The surface has to stay wet for ten minutes for the chemical to do its job. Um, they prefer it to air dry, but knowing that you've gotta move dogs through kennels, you can squeegee it clean, let it dry faster than, um, but it has to be wet for ten minutes or you've wasted your time putting it on there. They also recommend to avoid using high-pressure hoses if there's still solid waste in the kennels. It has been repeatedly observed at CAC that solid waste, which is feces, which is poop, the kennels will be full of it. Y'all got video, um, slides, pictures last week of dogs laying in feces, dogs laying in feces, feces being in dishes. They were time stamped to show that it was observed at one point in time, and six hours later, it looked worse, not better, but worse. So we know that it's not being cleaned appropriately. And if you use a high-pressure hose, you actually liquefy the, um, feces and spread it onto walls. And they noticed it goes all the way, four kennels over, they will find wet feces from the cleaning of a chemical four miles back. So CAC's not following their own protocols, which includes inspecting chemicals and whatever. And that is in the packet, and I do want three minutes more, Your Honor.
You may, yes, ma'am. You may have, it'll be after the clerks. Thank you very much. All right. Next is Reverend Johnny Flakes III, representing the IMA. Observations and concerns related to council meeting of December fifth.
My name is Johnny Flakes, President of the International Ministry Alliance. Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, Counselors, today we come, and I say we, come to voice our concerns and constructive criticism about what we continue to see with this council. What we witnessed last Tuesday, December the fifth, twenty twenty-three, in the city council meeting was very troubling. We continue to see this city council construct false narratives or perpetuate false narratives. To be clear, we understand, whether you do or not, a false narrative is a commonly held belief that is based on inaccurate, incomplete misinformation. Often, false narratives refer to incorrect knowledge passed throughout a community or society. These false beliefs can be created intentionally or unintentionally by the institutions that shape culture such as city councils, government policies, political systems, and the media. A false narrative develops over time through institutional reinforcement. Because of this subtle reinforcement over time, false narratives are eventually accepted as truth by large groups of people, even entire societies, and are therefore very difficult to dismantle. This is what we have witnessed regarding inaccurate, incomplete misinformation within our city, and result is continuous division. But today, we come specifically to respond to the misinformation provided to this city council by internal auditor regarding forty-five point one million dollars. The forty-five point one million dollars inaccurate information, misinformation, was like blood thrown to sharks. It was framed to make it look like money was missing, not deposited, nor processed. This council escalated and pushed this false narrative by framing questions and comments that raised suspicions and distrust regarding the leadership, integrity, character of the entire Business Finance Licensing Department and the city manager. So today, we come to let you know, we are aware of what you are trying to do. This is to discredit the city manager and his entire department. This same type of false narrative strategy was also used to get rid of the former police chief, Freddie Blackman. Now, as law-abiding, tax-paying citizens in this city, we strongly urge you city councils, counselors, to, one, be truthful and transparent with the community and stop trying to save face by covering up the truth. Thank you, Father Mayor. Thank you for bringing the specific clarity to forty-five point one million dollars. We urge you to stop dividing our city by planting seeds of distrust in trying to discredit black leadership and by discounting and discrediting what blacks have to say who don't agree with you. We urge you to hold the internal auditor accountable for giving inaccurate misinformation by requesting her resignation or termination. We urge this council to issue a public apology to Director Alexander, the city manager Isaiah Hughley, all the staff of Business Finance Licensing Department, and to this city for the disrespectful, hostile environment, false allegations, contempt shown last week during the city council meeting, even those who were silent and said nothing at the time. We urge this city to hold these counselors accountable when it comes time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, best Flakes. All right, next is Mr. Melvin Tanner, representing the NAACP regarding audit information. Ms. Tanner just states your name and your city of residence for the.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, the city manager, city attorney, city council members. My name is Melvin Tanner Jr. I'm president of Columbus, Georgia, NAACP. Guess we can also say that God does work in mysterious ways. Mr. Mayor, you know, there's a quote that says, "The time is always right to do the right thing." And I think by today, by you allowing the deputy city managers to give a report was definitely the right thing to do. I stand here today to say that we stand in solidarity with the IMA and other organizations in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is Reverend Joseph Baker regarding the recent internal audit report and response. Reverend Baker.
My name is Joseph Baker. I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia. I left the previous council meeting perplexed, to say the least, as I reflected on the audit presented by Ms. McGinnis. It seemed clear to me that no matter what the rebuttal, answer, or the response to what was said, that it would never be good enough for at least six counselors at this desk. I found that to be very perplexing. When the audit team stood and said, "I don't have the supplementary report." I've not seen that. Not one counselor interrupted and said, "Well, let's call the internal auditor back and ask why." But there is this purpose to continue to move forth and to what I consider to be this public badgering of the manager. This is not right. One counselor spoke and said, "I just want to say to my constituents, I just want to say, at the end of the day, that there's this more to come." More to come. When the manager proceeded to try to explain and to educate what the locked box really meant, she was cut off. That's not what this body was elected to do. Here's the challenge. The challenge is this, and definitely for the six counselors who had a whole lot to say. Let me challenge you. Imagine it was you. I saw how the mayor was cut off today and couldn't finish. Imagine that was you. Let me challenge you to openly say to your constituents and the good citizens of this Columbus that we live in, and to say, "I'm sorry that I misled you. I was wrong." In my world, that's a requirement to meet my maker. I don't know about your world. This is wrong. I think it is a false narrative because I believe that the city manager may have future aspirations. And that if we can just put the narrative out there, that there's been this gross negligence, at minimum, I heard from one of the counselors, that if we could just perhaps taint the name, it will set the platform and present a person that is unelected. You may not agree with me, but that's what I felt city in that seat, and it breaks my heart. God bless you. God love you, and this pastor does too. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, Mr. Marvin Broadwood Sr., regarding appointed officers.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, Mr. City Attorney, and Mr. City Manager. I pray you are well. My name is Marvin Broadwood Sr., and I reside in Columbus, Georgia. First and as always, I pray you are well. I thank you for your continued service to our community. First, I would like to begin by thanking the mayor and Councilman Baker for returning my offer to call me and have a conversation about this issue. I entitled this address, "The Public Crucifixion of a City Employee." Last Thursday, while in the gym, a friend and his wife asked me what I thought about the missing forty-five point one million dollars from the city government. Later that same day, two ladies who were here this morning, who regularly attend the city council meeting, asked me while I was grocery shopping, and I quote, "Marvin, what's your assessment on the missing of the forty-five point one million dollars?" I explained in both situations that I had not had enough time or information to give them a comment. So that night and to the wee hours of the morning, I reviewed the recording of the last council meeting, Part One and a portion of Part Two. Not once, not twice, but three times, approximately three hours long. This period covered the complete audit presentation and the Director of Finance response. "The Public Crucifixion of a City Employee." Let me say this, as a former equal opportunity advisor for the Army and one that has testified in a judicial proceeding for a hostile work environment case. This one is going to cost our city some money. It might be later, but it's coming. I am not simply issuing a hyperbole here. If you think so, to all the citizens and to the council, please watch the previous council meeting on YouTube. And I'm pretty sure someone's going to tell you to delete it in time. These are just a few comments that have been brought, that have brought me to my conclusions. City councilperson made comments, and I quote, "We will not be able to recoup these funds." This is lost revenue. Forty-five million dollars is hard to wrap your head around. This is gross negligence, and it's going to be hard not to point the finger at someone. I didn't say this, but you need to choose your words carefully. Because we have other reports coming. And let me tell you, I've testified in hostile work environment cases. It's coming, and it's documented. Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you for issuing your statement yesterday. As you know, I asked last Friday in an email to everyone that a press conference be held to issue a formal apology to Mrs. Alexander, because the damage, you see, had already been done. The barn door had already been opened, and the livestock was gone. Have you ever tried to put the toothpaste back into the tube? Hence, "The Public Crucifixion of a City Employee." I have attended over sixty, sixty percent of the city council meeting this year, and this is the first time I saw a director of a city department rape over the coals. "The Public Crucifixion of a City Employee." I would humbly ask the council, especially those that made those deframing statements, to issue Mrs. Alexander a formal apology before the calendar year ends. As to the audit, I have conducted over twenty-five inspector general investigations in the Army, and this is the first time I have ever heard an auditee say I wasn't afforded an opportunity to review the entire report before it is presented to the high authority. That's unheard of. In this case, you are the high authority. "The Public Crucifixion of a City Employee." And I will be back with my three minutes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, and Mr. Broadwood, thank you. All right, move on to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hughley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few items here on my agenda today. First is a memorandum of understanding with Neighbor Works Columbus. Request that you authorize an MOU with Neighbor Works Columbus for the development of workforce housing at Elliot's Wall.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, the second motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. Chris, councilors, you can enter your votes, please. And that's approved.
I've got GO, Georgia Department of Transportation Roadside Enhancement and Beautification Council Grant Program asking your approval.
Motion second for approval of item two. Any discussion?
And this is at I-185 in J.R. Allen.
Thanks, sir. Chris, please cue it, councilors. You can enter your votes. That's approved.
Got a twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan update adoption, which includes a twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-eight community to work program. This is a ten-year document, but it's updated every five years.
All right, there's a motion, a second to approve. We've got to the motion, Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, I see that our planning department is here. I'd like to hear from him about this proposal.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, good morning. This was brought to you the first time on October the nineteenth, and you approved it. DCA required us to make a few changes to the document, and they asked us to resubmit it to you for approval.
Okay. All right, there is a motion, a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Chris, please post it on the screen, and councilors, you can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, there we go. Thank you. That's approved.
I've got Hawks Foundation Grant. It's a small grant, two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, no match.
All right, there is a motion to approve the grant. Is there a second? All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Chris, councilors, please vote. Missing one. That's approved.
I've got a list of purchases, A through J. I've got A is lead-based paint as best.
All right, there is a motion. Paul J. Pull J. All right, there's motion, a second for A through I. Is there another one anyone would like pulled? All right, uh, we'll do a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor of purchases A through I, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, and the city manager, if you go through them, and then when we get to J, we can.
Sure.
Counselor.
I've got A, lead-based paint asbestos and clearance testing services, uh, on an as-needed basis. I've got water management, uh, services. As, uh, that's, uh, B. C is agricultural chemicals to maintain ball fields for parking wreck. D is emergency, non-emergency notification system. You know, our emergency call system. Uh, E, uh, contract extension for debt collection services. L is a twenty-twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty four-by-two super duty truck, uh, for public works. G is a declaration of surplus vehicles by fleet, uh, maintenance. Uh, H would be annual membership dues for ACCG, Association County Commissioners of Georgia. Uh, Mayor, that's A through H.
Okay, you can go ahead and do I, I believe, and then, sure, there were questions on J, if I understood right.
Okay, I would be construction services for Williams Road at Fortune Road Roundabout. Uh, that's five million sixty-six thousand for that roundabout. And those are the ones I believe you called for.
Yes, sir, and, uh, Counselor, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I do have, I do want some more explanation on J and L. Um, we were talking, we were in the process of the integrated waste, I'm sorry. Yes, I, K, and, and L. Um, we were in the middle of the integrated waste, um, presentation, and that was interrupted. So I do want just us to go over the recycling services. And the carts again, please.
Well, and, and let me just say for, um, Am Waste, um, you know that Pratt, uh, the recycling company, um, moved out and the equipment inside the recycling facility belonged to Pratt. Um, and, um, without the recycling equipment, it left us stranded, if you will. Uh, they were an outside contractor. They moved their equipment at the end of the agreement because we couldn't come to, uh, an agreement. And so, um, for less than thirty days, I, I think it has been, um, we've had to, um, collect recyclings as we always have done, and we've had to make some deposits into the landfill uh, for less than thirty days with very minimal, if any, impact on the life of the landfill. But we were able to negotiate an agreement with Am Waste, um, to handle, uh, recycling from the time we collected and deliver it to our re- recycling center, transfer it to them, and then they would then deliver it, uh, to a recycling center, either in Montgomery, Atlanta, or somewhere else. They've agreed to a one-year agreement with us. That one-year agreement will allow us the time that we need to do another RFP for recycling, uh, that we will determine whether we're going to do it, um, internally, if we're able to afford and purchase the equipment, processing equipment, uh, or an RFP that would contract out and have a contract similar to what we have had over the, uh, past years with Pratt. And so we've reached a one-year agreement with Am Waste. Uh, they are ready to start work. In fact, they were ready to start work early, but, um, I said to staff, no, we're going to wait until we get a vote at council, and they're prepared to start tomorrow. We would collect recycling. Citizens will see no difference in what they've always had. The only difference that you will see is that when we deliver it to the recycling center, those, um, products will be transported out of town to a, uh, recycling center by, uh, Am Waste. And so with that, uh, the director is here and can answer any specific questions you have.
I move to approve J.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are the, your, your points to, okay, let me call on Counselor Thomas. Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I, I would like for you to reiterate, if you will. I've had, uh, several people ask, a number of people ask me, "Has the city quit recycling?" And I want you to clear that up and make sure that we know exactly what's going on, if you will.
The city has, has not.
Say that again.
The city has not discontinued, uh, recycling. Um, we, uh, what I just explained is, is the only reason that we have taken, and for less than thirty days, uh, recycling materials to the landfill. And we, um, had a, um, someone, an expert, tell us how is that going to impact our landfill to take the, the tonnage in recyclings that we collect to the landfill for less than thirty days. And, uh, they said, uh, really no impact. And so we are happy that, uh, the, the staff at Public Works, uh, along with Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, have been able to negotiate with Pratt, um, it's not, excuse me, with Pratt, but with Am Waste, uh, to, um, move that, those recycling collections to somewhere outside of Columbus. We, uh, we're trying to grow our recycling program. I, I think maybe less than twenty-five percent of the citizens in Columbus recycle. In fact, we've even talked about mandatory recycling, which some communities do have, uh, but we are not there yet. Uh, but we have not and will not, and, uh, we will always recycle going forward, and we're trying to grow that program. I will say that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Counselor, I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor Davis, let's go ahead and get the vote in. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we've approved aye, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ms., Ms. City Manager, why, why?
Yeah, J.
I apologize. We approved J. I apologize. Counselor Davis.
While, while we're on this subject, while I have the director here, I, I think I asked you, uh, about a grinder-type situation, molting, all that. Do you, you got anything, or you want to?
Not, not today.
Okay, good. Yeah, all right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, with, uh, so K, uh, this is additional assembly and delivery services for household garbage and yard waste carts. As you know, I, I would say into, I think the mayor, you, and you, Mayor Protem, yesterday, we have sixty thousand, uh, households, and that's three carts per household. You got a blue one, you got a black one, you got a green one. And so, you know, we are in the cart business and, and will be there as we go forward. And so, um, we've got, uh, a vendor who put those carts together, deliver them to households and so forth. Uh, and we owe them fifty thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents for their services. And so, um, the payment is required due to the additional costs incurred for the assembly and delivery of carts, uh, which was higher than originally anticipated. And so we're asking your approval to pay this vendor for the services they've rented.
Do I hear a motion? I'll, I'll move that it'll be approved. Is there a second? Second, okay, to the motion. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, um, Mr. City Manager, I just had questions, that's all. I, I think I understand. I just wanted to, to ask you. I know that, um, item. You got one K, I think, and one, one is L. Uh, one of them is just replacements, right? We just need more units and that's the cost, and, and that's how I perceive that, right?
That's correct. Um, seven hundred and two additional units, household waste carts, uh, from the company in, uh, L. But be clear, K have already been delivered. This company assembled them and delivered them to citizens, residents of Muskogee County, and we need to pay them for their work, for their services.
Right, I was just, uh.
And then L would be for additional carts. We have sixty thousand households times three. So we are going to be purchasing carts, or, you know, if you don't approve this, and the citizen calls us and say, uh, "My cart is broken," like so many do, some of you have called and said, "I got a resident whose cart is broken," and we deliver that cart the same day. And when they call us, if we don't have carts, we're going to tell them we don't have them. So that's K and that's J.
Right, I was just, uh, I, I'm, I'm assuming that that's part of the contract that we have with them, and they're just coming back, and, uh, it looks like two dollars plus additional they're asking per can for, I guess, assemblies and deliveries. Uh, uh, um, you just said that's already been done, so I, I, I guess, is that just, you, you feel good about that?
Absolutely.
As far as, um, um, part of the con, um, again, I'm guessing this is part of the contract? Or is it, uh, in addition to the contract?
Would you turn our mic on, Ms. Mayor?
It's on.
Please.
So, uh, what, last year, I believe it was, we had IPL, who was a company that came in and delivered fifty-six thousand five hundred carts to every resident in Muskogee County, every household resident. This is that last payment of that money.
I got you. Yeah.
That's what that is.
Okay, yeah, I guess my question was, are they now coming back and said?
No, no, this is the last payment.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. So these seven hundred and two additional waste carts, are they in, included in this K?
Trail hit your light. For some reason, your light is.
So are you, are you going to come back later and ask us to pay for assembly and delivery of the additional seven hundred and two?
No, ma'am, we're, we will be doing that ourselves. That first one, K, was from the, the large order. That was part of the ARP funding that we received. That was the, I believe it was six million, if I'm not mistaken, for carts to be put together and delivered to every residential household in Muskogee County. K is the last of that payment. J is replacement carts that we need to start building our inventory to be able to replace carts for various reasons, whether it be a wheel is missing or it's broken or whatever. But we will be assembling those carts. We will be delivering those carts.
Well, and, and the fact is, when you order fifty-six thousand carts at one time, they don't have the capacity to do that work, and that's why it's contracted out. Now that you've got those carts on the ground at every household, they're going to be, it's, it, it will slow it down, and, and it's something manageable by, by staff, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Begley.
Do we have an, of the hundred and eighty carts, do we have an estimate of how many we think we're going to repair or replace on an, on a go, on an ongoing basis each year?
I know, honestly, not right now, but I can come back with that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's a motion to approve K and L, and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All right, it's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, those two are approved.
And so, Ms. Mayor, before I go to updates, um, I, um, received, uh, an email from Counselor Davis yesterday, on indigent care. And, um, he wanted to bring forward, um, process and payment to, um, Piedmont Columbus Regional. And, um, and I responded back asking the city attorney to draft a resolution that, um, you would, um, need to vote on for us to move forward with what Counselor Davis requested. And so, um, you should have copies of that resolution. I asked the assistant city attorney to pass those around the table to you. And just for those here and watching by television, you know, I won't read this resolution, but, um, but we had had a, a thirty-year agreement with, um, our county hospital, Medical Center, now Piedmont, for thirty years. Um, that agreement expired, um, June of twenty-twenty-two. And so when it expired, you know, we were still in the process of moving forward with an RFP, and, uh, to obtain a, a wide range of professional medical services to qualified indigent residents here in Muskogee County who would not be covered, um, with insurance. And so we were delayed with that RFP, and so we did finally get that RFP out, and we got bids in. Uh, and there were successful, uh, bidders in the RFP, um, and they would be eligible for reimbursement, um, for qualified indigent care services. Well, when we brought those four bids, well, four bids were received, and we, and we brought, I believe it was three, two to council. Uh, we brought Piedmont Columbus Regional and Mercy Med, I believe it was. And so, um, those bids were rejected, uh, by this council. You rejected any of all bids. And so we did not award an indigent care contract for professional medical services, uh, to any of the bidders. And, um, and so Piedmont Columbus Regional have continued, obviously, as a county hospital to provide indigent care services. And they've been, so they've incurred expense treating qualified indigent care patients during the fiscal year that ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Ms., Mr. City Manager, excuse me for interrupting. I don't think there's any reason that we can't continue, but I, I have been told that the sponsor wants to delay it until January. So if you want to continue to go through it, we can, and, but we, we can cover it again, I think, in, in January.
Okay. Well, and I'll just close with saying that, um, Columbus Regional, obviously, they're seeking reimbursement, uh, for July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. And, um, in the amount of up to three point five million dollars, I would say, uh, for verified medical treatment at Medicaid rates for individuals treated between those dates, June, um, thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, or July one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And so, uh, that is what, the resolution that we were going to ask that you be approved, that you approved today based on the email from Counselor Davis, but because it's going to be delayed, we'll bring it back, Ms. Mayor, in, in January.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. Man, City Manager, thank you. Uh, I appreciate that. And yes, you're right that, uh, you know, we're trying to deal with a matter that, uh, it's in good faith. It's in good faith. I will admit there was no contract because we chose to try to come up with a better reimbursement model to be more inclusive and more equity in the community as far as the underserved or, or, uh, how we deal with some of those things across the board, whether it's healthcare, mental health care, or, or other, uh, other needs. But this is just a, you know, since we did have, like you said, the thirty-year contract, they've been doing it. They've got a clinic over there solely for the underserved over there, and they've still been doing it in good faith. They really haven't asked, uh, we've got some funds sitting there for that year that we said we were going to move over into the pot, and then, uh, entities can reapply, but, uh, this was an attempt to what I think do, i- is the right thing. I've heard some talk around the table with my colleagues. I think it was even expressed by the administration that. by the administration, that, you know, that we need to, to, to look at, you know, that from that perspective, be able to look at the reimbursement if people have provided those services in good faith. And I think we can say that wholeheartedly, the verification, like you said, is, is, is important. I think in delaying this, we'll give it a little more time, let the council look at this, digest it, maybe at the same time have some more conversations. I think the attempt was to try to get it, we're on a different budget cycle, June to June, businesses are usually January to December, and, you know, they've got to, they've got to get their financial statements and balance sheets in order, and, you know, this, you know, when I look at this, it's a cost. I mean, they came out of their pocket, they did it in good faith, I mean, it's a loss to, to Piedmont. So that's all this is, but thank you for bringing this and talking about it today, Mayor. I think you even, we've had some conversations, I think you've even expressed some desires as well, so this will give us some time to think about it going into the, going into the next year. Thank you. And Mayor, if I may, I did wanna mention one thing to you, Ms. City Manager, on the, I wanted to go back, get through your agenda and then go back to the number one about neighbor works, which is great, I'm glad we approved that, but I, I mentioned this before, and I'd really like us to give, to take a close look at it and give some, give some thought into looking at, trying to find a way to settle the current financial mechanism that's out there, that I know that it's a quote conventional, or let's just say it's a tad, but I believe that there's some aspect of this, when you really add it up, does it, you have to ask your question financially, if there's a better way to do this, as opposed to compounding interest from a conventional-type financial mechanism that's servicing it right now, and maybe, maybe look at it from another way. I, I, I think, I'm asking you if you and your staff would do that, and, you know, I'm just, I'm really concerned about the, the compounding aspect of what's going on now, under the current inflationary condition we're at. We all know what interest rates are today, so anyway, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Well, we've got a few others, and, you know, it might not be a bad idea, next work session to bring in a number of our community partners that are working on affordable housing. That is a massive, massive challenge. I know Counselor Tucker's been very interested in that, an advocate for that, so maybe we can work that out at one of our next work sessions, bring in all those constituents in those subgroups that are kind of working, working on that. Counselor Grab?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to this resolution that Counselor Davis brought up. There's an aspect of this that I don't necessarily see we need to delay. And when we go forward on creating, you know, the replacement for this contract, I would like to see us break out inmate and indigent care, because I see them differently. I see inmate care is a cost that we, the city of Columbus, incur. They're taking care of individuals within our care, in our jails, individuals that our fire and EMS picked up, you know, picked up and took to the hospital. Anything that is associated with the work that we do, the services we provide as a city, I would like those funds to be made available and to pay out on those expenses to Piedmont. We can talk about indigent care. In my mind, it's a little bit different, because that is someone of their own volition or being brought in by a family member or something like that, that come into the hospital, and we really have no control over that. But we can, in the, in the long run, we can reimburse them once we get this all straightened out again. So I don't, I mean, I do agree with delaying until January, but I would like us to maybe make an amendment to this resolution, taking out any reference to indigent care, but let's pay for the costs that they incurred taking care of our inmates and anyone that we brought into the hospital.
So, so may I add, just for clarification, the hold, as I see it, is with Piedmont. We are processing inmate indigent care, that's an ongoing process, that has never been halted and will not be halted. For me, and I think it was in the, therefore, it only talks about the three point five, this is only about Piedmont and not about inmate jail care, so I just wanted to.
Okay, but I, I just see inmate here. Okay, so the inmates, you know, all the costs that these hospitals around town have incurred taking care of inmates and people that fire and EMS have taken to the, to the hospital, those bills have been paid, and they're all caught up.
So, let, let's make sure we understand, you wanna respond to that?
And I think the city attorney wants to weigh in as well.
And it's all that deficit, the manager Hodge, since she deals with it.
Yeah, I think we got it clarified, but this resolution only deals with indigent care to citizens in the county and not inmates. I'll let Ms. Hodge speak to the inmate care, which counties do have obligations to take care of their inmates, and we recognize that, but we've got a medical provider and a contract for expenses for inmates, but why don't you brief them on that, Ms. Hodge?
Sure, and so the finance director has been working with the sheriff's office. The process is, the medical provider that's located at the jail handles anything that requires treatment outside of the jail. The process is, if they send them to the hospital, they send them to Piedmont, Piedmont will invoice the mail, the jail provider, they scrub the invoices, validate they were an inmate, validate the services they receive, validate the amount that's being charged, they pay, they're supposed to pay Piedmont, and then Wellpath sends us an invoice and we pay them. So I know the finance director has had recent conversations with the sheriff about getting those invoices processed, so they're in process.
Can we, is there any way of looking at that policy and that procedure to speed it up?
It, it should be processed more timely.
Complicate it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then, I'm, I'm fine with delaying this resolution.
Right, thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody, we do have a RFP that, I think December fifteenth is the date, and it's in reference to, I know myself, Counselor Davis, and Counselor Barnes, along with the finance department, had a meeting to establish what we would like to see regarding this, and we called it underserved healthcare consultant. So we will be looking for a third-party advisory firm with experience, experience establishing community-funded networks of care for underserved and inmate populations. This firm shall assist the city with developing a fair, inclusive, and equitable plan to service the target populations' medical needs. Counselor Grab, I did write, in reference to the inmate and underserved healthcare, just questioning if we can separate those two, or when we have further discussions with the consultant. And I was gonna ask Deputy City Manager Hodge, once the RFP closes out on December fifteenth, what's the typical timeframe that this will be processed?
So typically, we put together a committee that will review, and it really depends on how many entities respond to the RFP. If there's just a few, then obviously the review process is much shorter, but typically it's a two-month process, two to three months for the committee to meet, go through, if they want to interview the, the vendors that responded, that could be part of the process. So until the committee meets, it's kind of difficult to say, but I would say a two to three-month process.
I think when we, we had that meeting, we was asking if it could be expedited, because we still having this conversation, and we need to actually take care of underserved individuals in the community. So if we could expedite not the three months, but probably the two-month timeframe, and I'm not sure if you can share how many individuals have actually submitted for this RFP as of today or not?
They won't submit until the fifteenth. We are getting a lot of questions, so my expectation is someone is gonna request us to extend it, because there have been a lot of questions asked regarding the specifics of the RFP.
Okay, is it questions that we had to answer? Or, or if you, because you remember, we had that meeting, and was it questions based on some of the things that, you know, requirements that we had asked?
It was more process questions.
More process, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I just wanna make sure that I understand exactly what this resolution is doing. This is not rewarding a, an RFP, or awarding an RFP. This is paying for what Piedmont did from June of twenty-two through June of twenty-three, and does not speak to June of twenty-three to date. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, and so at some point, we, there's a question mark at the end of this, we can expect something to come back to us to pay Piedmont or someone from June of twenty-three through whatever date that happens to be?
That's correct.
Okay, and the RFP that is going out, is this only for the indigent care, the, yeah, the, the indigent care piece, the, the mental health piece?
It is an RFP to select a consultant to develop the indigent care program for Muskogee County. It's not actually selecting the providers, it's actually to get a medical consultant to develop our program going forward. How vendors will be, how hospitals and medical providers will be selected, how they'll be reimbursed, so it's actually to get a consultant to put that program together.
And because it will be coming to us from a consultant, it may be, for example, that Piedmont does this piece, and St. Francis does this piece, and somebody else does this piece, is that?
That, that could be the program.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Grab?
Thank you, just one more thing, to the city attorney, in this fourth paragraph, it says, whereas in order to ensure that there is no time period when healthcare services were not available to qualified individuals in Muskogee County, just because we're, we're not under contract and we're not reimbursing, I want it, I want it to be very clear, medical services are still being provided to the underserved. These hospitals, when they come in there, these underserved are being, sir, taken care of. What we're talking about is not medical healthcare to the underserved, we're talking about reimbursement to the medical professionals that do provide care to the underserved. There's a big difference there, and I think that we need to make sure that we clarify and we work from that point of view. We're not in the healthcare profession. We are reimbursing them for services that they provide to the underserved.
Yeah, that's correct. They have Piedmont being one of the providers during the past year without a formal contract. Absolutely, we know they have provided service and will continue to do so. We just wanna simply have this avenue available to reimburse them for the past fiscal year.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, I didn't know any of my colleagues have any more questions on that.
Not on that issue, no, sir.
The city manager, if I may, I just wanted to get a, if we could get an update on, I, I had, I'm having some of these, it's that time of the year where, you know, all the, all the sports, youth sports and all are kind of taking a break, and they're starting to get their fields back in order. I had someone come to me today and said that they're fixing to put fifteen thousand dollars of grass and clay and sprinklers and everything on, you know, on the facilities, and I, and they said, you know, that they were asking me, you know, why should they do that, basically? And I said, look, we've, we've all, the council in the last budget cycle put some money aside to take care of, if you can validate that you've got invoices and you're doing the work and you're putting that in there, we set aside funds to, you can be reimbursed for that as long as you show that you put the materials and all the rest, it's not for labor or anything like that, but material costs and things like that. It's a kind of a win-win for both sides, but, you know, we've never really heard anything about the plan, and we just kind of left it up to the Parks and Recs Department to pull that together. I'm, I'm hoping I gave them accurate information that they can apply, if they in fact are doing that, is that, is that?
Yeah, we did set aside a small amount of money, I'm thinking a hundred thousand dollars, I don't, I, I can't recall exactly, for organizations that affiliated with our ball fields could make an improvement and be reimbursed, and it may be up to a certain amount, like twenty-five thousand dollars. But we'd like to know before they go and do it. I mean, they need to apply, as you said, and don't go and do it and then come and bring us a receipt. So we need to, we need to know what's going on there.
Okay, and if that's the case, and we just need to make sure we're communicating to the entities, that's how you go about it, but when I see this person next time, and I probably will tomorrow, the next day, I can say that you can, you know, you can still apply, but make sure you talk to the Parks and Recs Department about what you're doing.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Mayor?
That appears to be all the questions.
So I've got two updates, one on demolition of a specific piece of property, that should not take very long, and, and then the final update would be on animal control audit, it's an audit update on animal control. I've got Ryan Pruitt, our Director of Inspections and Codes, on demolition of property.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Mr. City Manager, do you have an update on our demolition, process demolition list, as well as one particular property on Carmel Court as requested by Counselor Tucker? So this is the flow chart that we've been using for many years that just highlights the demolition process, all this is outlined in Chapter Eight of the city's ordinances, but essentially, inspections and codes gets a complaint where we notice a house on our own that may be eligible for demolition. We go do a survey, an assessment of that property. If the cost to repair the property exceeds fifty percent of the tax assessor's value of that property, then it becomes eligible for demolition. Then we establish a hearing date, which is held in front of me and my staff, the owners given the opportunity to, to explain their side of the story, the plans for the property, those types of things. And then following that hearing, if, if the property's still eligible for demolition, they are given a notice to demolish and repair, given a little more time to fix it. If they do not do any work, eventually we get that property here in front of council for first and second reading in the demolition ordinance. Once the ordinance is approved, then we get with the contractor. Once the ordinance is approved, then we get with the contractor to get it on the list to get it taken down. And then once the property is demolished, the owner will get a bill for the cost of the demolition. And if they fail to pay that bill, then a lien is placed on their property. So potential delays in the demolition process, so ownership transfer. You know, anywhere along this process, if the ownership transfers before we can demolish the house and get it taken care of, then the process does have to start over. Uh, one example on the last list that council approved in November, eight fifteen Hard Degree, that property was approved by council. However, right after council prove it, the bank finished their foreclosure process. And now the bank owns it instead of the original owner we were dealing with. So we've restarted the process with the, the bank inability to locate owners. We are required to do our best to find all the owners. Bank, the individuals, give them proper notice to allow them some due process. These are very, a very large costs that will be incurred if they do not comply. So we, we do take time and try to locate all the owners. Tax sales are another one. When a property sales is sold at the tax sale, you know, the owner, the previous owner is given a year right of redemption. Um, so the, the new owner that bought it on the courthouse steps usually doesn't want to make a big investment into that property because they could lose that. So we try to work through those with the new owners that did purchases. Then of course, funding, you know, an average single-family home costs over ten thousand dollars to tear down. A lot of that has to do with the hazardous materials that are found in, in a lot of them. And so that, that can be a challenge for us at times. So just real quick, what to do if you see a dilapidated structure in the community? You know, report it to three-one-one. Let the city know, hey, this is in my neighborhood. You know, we are aware of, of most of them, but you know, we're not aware of all of them. Um, so certainly call three-one-one. If you leave your contact information with three-one-one, a code enforcement officer will call you back and give you an update on that property. And if you own a dilapidated structure, or maybe you just inherited one from one of your family members, please get in contact with us as soon as possible. Uh, and we will meet with you, work with you, work out a plan to be able to rehabilitate the property. So our current demolition list, currently there are a hundred and five properties on the demolition list. Uh, sixty-six of those were added in this calendar year in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, twenty-two of those were added in calendar year twenty-twenty-two, and then seventeen predate those twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we currently have just under three hundred thousand dollars remaining in our FY twenty-four budget. And the goal is, starting really in January, is to bring properties to council for approval to expend the remainder of that budget by June thirtieth. And then moving forward in FY twenty-five, we will look at the balance of our list and estimate the costs to take care of those properties and request funding as part of FY twenty-five. So this is just a map of the current locations of all one hundred and five of those properties. Um, as you can see, there is a concentration of them in kind of the North Highland area as well as in South Columbus, but those is just a general location of all one hundred and five properties. And then this is a map over the last couple of calendar years of the properties that the city has taken care of and council has approved and, and we have demolished. So I wanted to address specifically twelve oh nine Carmel Court to address Councilor Tucker's questions. So council did approve the demolition of the structure in an ordinance that was passed on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. And this is an example of inspections and codes working with an owner to give them an opportunity to rehabilitate the property. So prior to council's approval, the owner had obtained the building permits. So this was a house that was damaged by fire. Uh, the owner did come in prior to the council approval and obtained permits. And then after council approval, the owner in fact began working on the property. They had installed new roof framing, the new roof decking, repaired the interior wall framing, and completed approximately seventy percent of the total repairs that would, would have made it, you know, completely compliant. Uh, and I have some pictures on here, but really all they lacked was installing the exterior skin on one exterior wall, putting exterior windows, and then re-roofing the, the new part of the roof framing was all they lacked. So they, they did put tens of thousands of dollars in repair work into the property between August twenty-one and February of twenty-two. And then in February of twenty-two, they stopped work. So it has sat, and again, I'll show you a picture here in a second, but it has sat unfinished from February of twenty-two until the current time. Um, so we did make a mistake in that we closed our demolition case while it was still being repaired. Our policy and, and what we should do is, you know, never close a case until the repairs are a hundred percent complete. There was a, a change in personnel that happened in February twenty-two and that's why the case was closed. So, I mean, that, that was our mistake. Again, we should never close a case until the repairs are a hundred percent complete. Um, at that time, however, they had done enough repairs, really that it, it was not eligible for demolition any longer. They had done enough repairs to get above that fifty percent value. Um, so after consultation with the city attorney about that fact and the fact that it had been so long, um, it was determined that the best steps forward were to go through the demolition process again. And so we will bring this property back to you, trying to get it on our next list, get all those steps finished in early twenty-twenty-four. So since this has kind of come back up, we have been in contact with the owner. And they have reactivated all their building permits and do plan on, on starting work again. So we'll see if, if they will finish the property out. Um, so the picture on the left was in my demolition presentation in July of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, you see it was a fire damage. Again, the whole roof structure is gone. You can see it's, you know, you can see, see to the sky on the left. And on the right was all the work that they had done. So you can see they completely rebuilt that half of the roof structure. They got all the fire damage out, ripped out all the inside, started reframing the interior walls. Again, they really spent tens of thousands of dollars to get almost there. And unfortunately, you know, it's set out in the weather for the last year and a half, so a lot of this material will have to be removed in order to comply with the building codes. Um, and again, that's why it's on the demolition list again and, and will be brought, brought back forward.
Uh, Councilor Tucker, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. This property is in the Georgetown subdivision. And I actually have a, a photo from one of the neighbors that lives directly next door. The entire backside is completely out. It's not just that. Yeah, from the street you see that. And I actually was gonna send this so you can add it to that presentation. But the entire backside is out and it's rodents and all kind of issues going on right now. And they're going to the neighbors. I mean, it's become a nuisance. But it's not just what's pictured. It's actually the entire backside has nothing. And it's really, when you look at it, it's, it's bare. It's completely bare. So, um, I know you said that they re-initiated, that they did this before. Um, I get plenty calls from those residents in Georgetown. Uh, and they're honestly just tired. And I would be too if I had to deal with this. So, um, I'm not sure. You say you was gonna bring it back on the demolition list, but could it be placed where it was initially?
Yes, certainly. You know, our intent is as soon as enough days pass with all the notices, you know, and so I believe it will be eligible to be brought forward for your consideration uh, in January. So that would be our intent is we do plan on bringing forward a list in January. And if all the notices and stuff have been served on this property, it would be included on that list.
Okay, because that, um, I, I really do think that that was an issue of, you know, I understand that you're saying that the person left and, you know, we pulled it off the demo list and it should not have been pulled. And I think that we should, you know, own up to that mistake and keep it as, as is. And it, and it should be on the, um, on the demolition list and actually within this budgeted amount that we have. And I can't remember exactly how much you said was I think two hundred ninety-seven thousand remaining, but I think it should stay within that amount because we've been dealing with this problem. And I'm not sure if you actually put in here exactly when this property became a nuisance for that, um, that area. I think it's been quite a, some time.
Yeah, I know it, I believe it predates twenty-twenty. So, yeah, certainly our intent is to, you know, put it back at the top of the list and get it taken care of. And, and one other thing, just to keep council aware is when I come, like in January, when I come, I'm gonna include a summary slide of the last list that council approved. So that way, everybody's clear on, you know, where those properties are. And hopefully they're all taken down by that point. But like I said, with the one with Hard Degree that transferred ownership, at least council will have an update on, you know, this property is not being demolished, demolished and the reason why.
Yeah. And then I'll send you these photos from that individual that shows that the entire backside of that property is, you know, completely, completely gutted. And I, I just don't see them being able to help prior to that January date. Um, I, I do want to ask if you can add a property to your, um, I guess watch list? And this, um, I received this from Ms. Kitty Buckner. Um, it's four nine zero Pine, Pinecrest Drive. Uh, it's, they've been having, you know, some issues. It's right across from their, um, home. So if you could add that one?
Yes, ma'am. I will. I was just taking a note on my phone to, to check it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Huff?
Director Pruitt, uh, if you could go back to the Hard Degree property, uh, where did you say it's starting all over? Because we have Mrs. Hightower next door on one side. Coach Davis, couple doors down. Because I don't know, it goes back probably what, since the fire, three, four, five years?
Correct. So, um, yeah, and I'm not, I don't have the details when we started our demolition case on it. But the bank, you know, after council had approved it in November, the bank reached out and they sent us the deed showing that they, now the ownership has been transferred back to a trust owned by the bank. And we've spoken with their representatives and they have a contract in place to sell it to somebody who's plan is to rehab it. So we're following, you know, along and, you know, restarting the process with them. And again,
What's the timeframe?
So with that one, it, it sounds like it's going to move from the bank into another hand. So, you know, we're gonna start the process. And again, since it was already approved by council, it was at the top of the list. As soon as we can get through the process with the new owners, we would bring it back again for council approval. So,
What would be the requirements for them moving ahead in a expedient manner? Because this was a fire that burned out. So we got rodents, we got everything been running around for the last few years. Uh, and after that presentation that we were moving ahead, I met with some of the neighbors. So everybody was happy. Now we're coming back saying it's not going to happen. But it's still a burned-out area over there that really looks bad. So I just need to know.
Right. So assuming, again, and it gets tricky because, you know, if we start the process with the bank and then they sit on it for two months and flip it to a third party, you know, now I've wasted two months because I gotta start over with that third party. But personally, my goal would still be to get it taken care of and approved by council this fiscal year. You know, if they, if whoever ends up owning it hasn't started repairs or anything by then. So another-
Once, once you find them, what's the requirement for them to get started on it or?
So they would have to, you know, the owner would have to come pull the building permits and all that with us to get started, which isn't, you know, it only takes about a week or so to get a permit for a repair like that. So it's not a lengthy process to get the repairs started. It's just, like I said, the bank, what they've told us is they have a contract to sell it to a local person to fix it up. Um, and so that's what we're trying to see if that happens or not.
Yeah. I guess what I'm trying to understand is in that process, is it a traditional process that it's two months, one month, two months for the bank to take care of their business? For the new owners to come in, to meet with you, to say either you rehab it or we take it down?
So again, you know, our process, assuming we can notify the owners, uh, you know, without any trouble, you know, we can get it done in, you know, approximately four months. So, you know, we've already restarted and reset that hearing with the bank. And so, you know, if the bank doesn't flip it in the next four months, we'll bring it forward, you know, for your approval as the bank ownership.
But we need to get something done before summer.
Yes, sir.
It's hot, it's gonna get bad all over again. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Pruitt, um, I have noticed, um, and I don't, I don't know exactly what your process is. Um, I know that there was a reported two-year department, uh, at least a year ago, uh, a property on the corner of Twenty-Ninth Street and Tenth Avenue. Nothing has been done with that. That was a fire. There's, there are also, uh, as I've traveled down Second Avenue, a number of, of properties that have grass growing up and, uh, trees hiding the, the, and I'm not sure what the process is that I need to do to get those properties taken care of. They've been reported, but nothing has happened. And I haven't gotten back any kind of a report on why not. Uh, I, I imagine that property on Twenty-Ninth Street and Tenth Avenue may have changed hands. I don't know. Uh, but right now, that property burned so that if you're on Tenth Avenue, you can see all the way through the structure to almost to Hamilton Road. And it's, you know, it's certainly not something I would want to live catatorned across the street from. But, so can you, can you help me with any of this?
So I do know the property at, at Tenth and Twenty-Ninth did change hands. I believe it was September of this year that it, it changed hands. So we have started the process. They've already had their demolition hearing. Uh, that one will, you know, be eligible within the first half of next year to come to council. The other complication with that property is it is in a historic district. Based on our previous conversations, I'll, I'll go to BHR and inform them that, you know, the city does plan on acting on this and get their feedback and give them an opportunity to come to council uh, if they feel it's appropriate. Um, so we, I would anticipate that one also being on the list, you know, within the next six months.
And then those, those houses that are on Second Avenue, uh, down around Second Avenue and Forty-Second Street in that general area um, that are so grown up with bushes and shrubs and trees and so forth. I believe those have been reported. Is that something that you guys go out and say, cut this, cut these trees, cut these bushes?
Yes, ma'am. So bushes and trees are not covered under the weeds, our current weeds ordinance. So we don't have any jurisdiction over those, but certainly tall grass. And again, those, the tall grass issue should be taken care of within two to three months. So even if the, the structure may take, you know, longer than that, but the grass should be taken care of sooner. So if, and I do know one of our, actually, I think it's our longest uh, member of our demolition list is right there on Second Avenue as you're coming southbound up on the hill. Uh, that's another one that's changed hands several times that we're trying to get, get through. But if, yeah, if there's properties um, that are, are overgrown, and again, it's not trees and bushes we can't do anything about, but the grass is overgrown. Um, then certainly, you know, if it's reported and it's not taken care of within two to three months, you know, let me know and I can find out what the holdup is or what the issue is.
Okay. You say that trees and bushes are not covered under our regulations. Is this something that needs to be covered under our regulations?
So-
I mean, does, does Councilor Davis need to bring you a resolutions?
So the, the, the issue with the trees and, and bushes is you, you know, we start running the risk of regulating appearance versus, you know, an actual health concern. And of course, we're not the HOA, you know, we're a minimum standard. Um, and neighbors can cut their neighbor's trees, you know, back to the property line of bushes and, and and that's how, you know, a lot of cities have our same, you know, model that we don't deal with the trees and bushes, just the, the grass.
Did you hear that, Councilor Davis? Thank you.
Councilor Tucker?
Um, I, I actually, uh, one of my constituents, uh, had a question in reference to the demolition cost of ten thousand. And, and from, I think it said multifamily or mobile home properties can exceed a hundred thousand. So one of the questions that was asked, do we actually break it down to, say for instance, if the si, the house size is under a thousand, um, square feet, we do this certain if the si- the house size is under a thousand um square feet, we do this certain amount? And then if it's ten thou- I mean, not ten thousand, but a thousand to fifteen hundred, we do it in whatever, like five thousand, seven thousand, ten dollars, ten thousand, instead of just doing a typical ten thousand? Is it tiered or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, during, um, which is, it's actually, the current RFP, I think, is still under evaluation, but our current contract um during the competitive uh proposal process and the the information that was evaluated by the committee, it includes cost per square foot for different types of structures. Um, you know, wood framed house costs, and I don't have the specifics, but, you know, X amount of dollars per square foot, a brick structure costs, you know, a different square footage. Um, you know, then that, like I said, the biggest cost driver is the hazardous material. You know, so they, upfront, they provide, you know, at, or asbestos shingles is, you know, this much to abate per square foot. The mastic under the tile is this much per square foot. So all, we get that cost information upfront in a competitive bid process to try to get, uh, you know, the best pricing we can.
Yeah, I think their concern was that um people may, I guess, like bid or they give you a starting amount and then all of a sudden the price goes up like way high and and not, and and really having a standard um cost associated with demolition. And I'm not sure exactly, you know, how to uh keep it where people aren't starting off at this price, except for, I know we're talking about asbestos and things like that, but not giving you this amount and then at the end, you're, we're paying double for the demolition.
I believe, um, you know, we do use an annual contract for these services in that um pricing is locked in, you know, it can be up to a five-year contract. The pricing, I think, is locked in for the original term, which is maybe a three-year, and then the contractor can come back and but we, you know, we get a house, before I bring it to council, I get a quote and we actually do the hazardous material survey before to establish the total amount, cause that's included in the ordinance. Um, so we get a quote for each house and we confirm that it meets our contract prices, you know, it's fifteen hundred square foot wood framed house that, you know, it's this many dollars. Um, and then, so we confirm all that before we bring it to council. And so the, the cost is locked in by that annual contract.
Okay. And I got one final question, and it's, it's not um demo related. It's really, I'm gonna say a question in a statement. Um, I appreciate you helping with one of the citizens concerned um regarding the property that's located at five four four five Forests Road. Um, I think it was, I don't know if it was CVS or Bank, what, what was there? Was it CBNT? I'm not sure.
No, it, it, uh, CVS owns it. I think they had planned originally to put one there and then that development never happened. So I don't know what their intent for that property.
Before like a bank there or?
I'm not sure what it was.
Yeah, I'm not sure what
It was a bank.
It was a bank. Okay. So, and it's, it's at the intersection of um Forests and Woodruff. If people wanna kind of, close to where Pickly Wiggly, the new Pickly Wiggly is. Um, one of the things that um I was able to do, and I'm, I'm happy that you tracked down, that is um CVS um that actually owns it, which is headquartered headquartered in Rhode Island per, you know, the email. I will say this, I know that our ordinance violations um only include solid waste um enforcement. However, when um we had issues on Buena Vista Road, the old Walmart and also across the street at the old post office, uh, what I was able to do was verbally contact, and I, I know that's not part of the ordinance um in reference to char- truck parking. And I know, I think you said you was looking at doing some updated verbiage to the ordinance regarding that. I'm not sure if you was working on the trucks or?
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay. But I was able to talk to those people because they don't know what's going on in, in little old Columbus, Georgia. But I was able to talk to them and as of today, it's no trucks parked at Buena Vista Road, nor at the old um post office. So I think it's a, a conversation. When I passed by there yesterday, it was at least fifteen trucks on that little small property. It's becoming a nuisance. And not only was it trucks parked, cause what happens, they um leave trash. Um, what was going on at the old Wal- Walmart and old post office, they were changing tires. You would see urine and um that too, and Sprite, big two-liter bottles. And I mean, i- it's really a nuisance. And the, the neighbors in that Regency Park, and anybody that's passing by in that area, they are truly, you know, concerned about this. And I know it can be done. It's, it, it just takes a conversation with the owner. So can we possibly get a phone number and a phone call be made to that property owner? I mean, I have photos. If you wanna see the photos, but it is becoming a nuisance. And we were able to do it at those two properties, which you know, you know, at a time, it was fifty plus trucks out there on both sides. So over a hundred trucks in that area. If we were able to do it at those two properties, I'm sure we can do it at this property.
Yes, ma'am. And we have tried to reach out. Um, and we did have some conversations with, you know, their corporate office about, I don't know that we've reached the right uh person yet. And I'll be glad to share contact numbers with you if you wanna give them a call to and and try to push them along. And then we did send official uh certified mail uh correspondence regarding the solid waste. And so, you know, we recheck that after the warning period expires. You know, if it's not cleaned up, then the city can go in and at least get the trash picked up, you know, for that day. Of course, we know it'll probably come back if the trucks are still there. Um, so hopefully, in combination with the letter and making phone calls, we can get, you know, a similar result there as we were able to on Buena Vista.
And and one of the things um was to explain to the owner that by putting that sign up, that you will be told at owner's expense. And I contacted Griffin and Griffin. I mean, we were able to really move that process. So they just need to know that we can put that sign, that sign can be put up and those trucks can be moved.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, Ryan, earlier, um, Counselor Thomas was talking about the burned um house on Tenth and Twenty-Ninth. Are you aware of the other house? Like if you, if you're going towards Thirty-Fifth and the burned house is here on the corner, about three houses down on the right, it's the second from the, from the corner. I think, I think it's twenty-nine, twenty-two, Tenth Avenue. That one's in pretty bad shape also. Are you aware of that one?
I believe we, I believe we are, but I will double check and make sure.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Oh, Counselor Begley, I'm sorry.
Um, just a note for the board. If you can reflect that I stepped out for the discussion around Piedmont and that I'll reduce myself from any future votes regarding it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, final update today is animal control audit update. And uh, we've got Kanita here and um Director Drell Short, uh, Director Short.
Yes, sir. So if I can, I just wanted to start off by commenting on a statement that was brought before the body earlier in regards to a quote that I said, which was, if it's something that the veterinarian even says, that the veterinarian even says, take them straight to animal emergency, then we will do that. It was said in the context that we follow our veterinarians directives. Not that we take every animal to animal emergency, literally, we don't do that. We follow our veterinarians directives. So with that being said, I've got Kanita here. She is gonna give an update for you as it relates to the animal control audit that was done last year. She'll talk about field operations, the front desk operations, the shelter operations, the advisory board and the administrative operations. And to assist her with any questions that you have regarding euthanasia, Dr. Hall is present. He will be glad to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to the operations in the shelter. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kanita and let her get started.
And and Dr. Hall is here at um
Dr. Hall is our current, that's right.
Council Cogle and others.
That's right.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I am, my name is Kanita Hardnett Johnson. I am the Division Manager for Animal Care and Control. Um, I believe my last or my very first visit here was, uh, I was early in my tenure, which was in April. And I presented on the audit at that time. I understand, um, that many of you have received a number of calls, emails and other communications regarding the state of animal control and where we are with the recommendations that were provided um in the audit that was uh actually delivered on January earlier this year. So I will
Adjust your mic.
Okay. My apologies. So we will go ahead and get started. Um, I do have packets here um that will be I guess distributed to all of you uh with this presentation. One of the things I wanna start off with is um a little history about animal care and control. And I think this is very important because it uh opened a lot of it gave me a lot of opportunity to see exactly where we, where we've come from and where, from where we started. Um, in nineteen seventy, the Muskogee County Animal Shelters was built near the Columbus landfill of Chicago, on Chicago Road. At that time, that facility held twenty-five dog runs and fifteen cat kennels. It is also important to know at that time that animal shelter was not um run by Columbus Consolidated Government. It was actually part of the state. It wasn't until the late eighties and early nineties that Columbus, Georgia took over the practice of animal care and control. It wasn't until two thousand nine that a new facility, which it stands now at forty-nine ten Milgen Road, was erected. In that facility, it increased the number of dog runs from twenty-five to fifty-eight and cat kennels from fifteen to thirty-three. As Drell mentioned, we will be talking about the field operations, the front desk operations, shelter operations, the advisory board and the recommendations made in the audit. An audit of animal control of Columbus CACC was requested by former City Councilman John House and was approved by the City Council August ninth. The audit began on August fifteen and concluded on January twentieth, twenty-three. Now, in the package you've received, um, I have provided a copy of the actual audit that was presented. Um, the auditor at that time was Ms. Elizabeth Barfield. Let's talk about field operations. At the time of the audit, field operations consisted of um five officers. And they were responsible for going out to all dispatched calls that came into um Columbus Animal Care and Control. Those calls were, um, at that time, there was, the hours of operation was twelve PM to five PM inside the shelter. But our officers began their day of work at six and they worked two shifts. Um, first thing in the morning and then later that evening, working on call after ten PM. Since the audit, we've increased our staffing from five to eight. Um, we've actually had interviews and we should have two more starting by the first of the year. So by the staffing model, for Columbus Animal Care and Control, we will be fully staffed with our officers. And what that en- what that entails is one lieutenant, two shift leaders, and then uh seven officers. And those officers take care of the entire city of Columbus, Georgia.
Excuse me, Kanita. Um,
Yes.
Counselor Begley has a question?
Yes, sir.
One clarification. When you say fully staffed, is that fully staffed per the budget or fully staffed per um industry recommendations?
We are fully staffed per the approved budget by this council.
What is the difference between industry recommendations and the approved budget?
So industry recommendations, and what he's referring to is the National Animal Control Association or the NACA staffing model. What that looks like is one point six people should staff based on the number of districts we have here in Columbus, Georgia. Now, we have ten on book. Of course, two of those are citywide. So if we use the ten, by national standards, we actually should have sixteen officers and not ten. If we don't count citywide, which I wouldn't um recommend, but if we do not count citywide, that mean we will have eight, which was approximately thirteen officers um on working in Columbus, Georgia. You're welcome. Now, what the audit did not cover was what our officers needed to do their job safely and effectively. One of the first things I noticed when I took the position is that not only did I not have enough officers, they were not equipped. The only thing they would go into their duties uh to a call was a catch pole. And they're handling vicious, sometimes very aggressive animals. While we actually had tasers, none of the officers, not, none of the officers we had were trained to carry the tasers. So one of the things that I wanted to institute immediately was to get taser training for all active officers at that time. And that has taken place. So all officers now are not just equipped with a catch pole, they now have tasers. They also, and I'm skipping down, uh, compliments of Columbus Police Department, we were able to get uh body cameras, not only just for them on their persons, but inside of their vehicles. That is very, very beneficial because what we were finding ourselves in court is a he said, she said situation. Now we have body cameras that we activate as soon as we exit the vehicle and uh citizens and situations are recorded until we get back into the vehicle. We've also afforded our officers the opportunity to attend conferences, that they will be able to learn how to effectively go onto a scene and gather the correct information needed when we do have to go to court. That included uh animal abuse training, uh cruelty investigation training, along with how to correctly use the actual materials they have, so that they are remaining safe. Safety is extremely important to me because we do not have, uh, what I feel to be enough officers. And so all of my officers ride by themselves. Oftentimes, they are so far apart that if assistance is needed, it's a twenty or thirty minute wait. Now, we're gonna move on to shelter operations. And as we've heard today, that is probably one of the biggest concerns of our citizens here in Columbus, Georgia. At the time of the audit, shelter operations um had four active people who were responsible for all aspects of animals once they were brought for empowerment. Now, when we say empowerment, that could be from our officers that are actually going out to calls, or it could also be from citizens bringing in animals that they have found or say that they are strays. Those responsibilities including scanning for microchips, administering intake vaccines, entering these um, um animals into our CACC uh software, taking pictures of the animals, updating our website and social media platforms for citizens that are searching for their missing pets or hoping to adopt. Because we were staffed with only four people at the time, we did put a disclosure out on our website to allow us at least twenty-four hours to get that information into the system. Oftentimes, I'll be perfectly honest, we fell behind because we had more animals coming in than we did have people to put the information in. But for the most part, we stayed within that timeframe. And I also wanna take a minute to highlight the maintenance worker. At the time of the audit, we had one maintenance worker who came in and he is not on the payroll of Animal Care and Control. He is a borrowed employee. Prior to that, inmates actually clean the facility, because that's what the maintenance worker does. Clean the facility until Cleaned the facility until all day. We went from two inmates to one person that we borrowed from another facility. And that remains today. Not only is that, our current staffing has dwindled from four to two. We have two people who handle shelter operations. We no longer have a volunteer coordinator, and our supervisor, who was over the shelter, has retired. At the time of the audit, we knew she was going to retire. Unfortunately, she retired a little earlier. And so now we are sitting with two employees and one borrowed employee to handle all of shelter operations. The budget for a maintenance worker has been placed in our budget proposal for the last few FYs. And it has not been funded or approved. So what we have to do is what we can, and we do a fine job of keeping our kennels cleaned.
Excuse me, can you, Counselor Begley?
Yes.
Similar questions before. What is the difference? Can you reconcile the fully staffed amount that's in the budget versus the industry recommendation?
Yes, sir. So fully staffed, as you can see, is six. And the volunteer coordinator really shouldn't be included in that because they do operate on a separate side, but they do help us out. But fully staffed says it's six. That's six people. According to industry standards, and that is the NACA model, in fact, you have one in your packet, based on the number of intake of animals that we have on an annual basis, we're supposed to have four point five people working per day. Four point five people working per day. On average, we have two.
Oh, sorry, just to clarify. You say we're supposed to have four point five per day. If we were fully staffed, how many would we have per day? Like, if we actually had the full amount that were budgeted? If that was fully staffed, how many do we have per day so we can compare that to the industry?
So I would have to have, I would have to hire six more people to meet the standard because everybody doesn't work every single day.
The reason why I'm being very specific is because we do vote on the budget. I want to make sure I'm understanding how much budget we're specifically trying to address, so. The difference between, assume you got fully staffed per the budget, how many additional people would need to be in the budget in order to meet the industry guidelines on a daily basis? Does that make sense? What I'm asking-
It does.
Okay.
So I would have, well, let me break it down this way. I would need, of course, to fill the positions I have open, which is my supervisor and my volunteer coordinator. I would have to have two maintenance workers full-time, of which I have none. I have a borrowed employee. It does not, that's not in my payroll. Two maintenance workers. That's to replace the inmates we used to have that we no longer have. Does that make sense? And then I would have to have two animal control officers, which are my shelter operations people.
Right, so if the budget's showing, if you're fully staffed, it shows maintenance worker one as one role. So if you're saying two, you're saying we need one more additional maintenance worker in the budget. And then on the-
Well, let me stop. I don't even, I don't have, I don't even have that one.
Right, so there's, what you currently have, and then there's budgets. Because I don't know if we can help you hire someone unless there's a, unless it's a salary issue, but I'm just trying to focus on budget things that we're impacting. So if you're saying not only do I need to fill the existing role, but I need more budget, that's what I'm trying to hone in on to figure out, what is the gap between the existing budget and the industry recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Okay. You mentioned that you made some proposals during the budget process. I have accidentally, because I didn't know that as counselors, we weren't supposed to be in y'all department budget conversations. I know that popped in one time. However, my question is, when you say that you submitted it through the budget proposal, was that approved in the mayor's final proposed budget? Or did it stop at that budget proposal where you all have your department conversations? I'm looking at-
Oh, Drell.
Yeah.
In fact, just to clarify, we've been asking for additional employees when I was in animal control overseeing it. So it is, they have been added into the budget every single year. And when it gets to the point where it comes before the mayor's budget, they're not approved.
So, and that's before it comes to council.
That's correct.
Okay. So council, just to make sure of some clarity, council, when we get our final budget, when we start having a budget hearings, it's the mayor's proposed budget. So that part where you're saying that you submitted a budget proposal, it never was included in the mayor's proposed budget. Am I correct when I say that?
I believe you are correct.
Okay. So not only, so I'm gonna take it one more step. And I'm not sure if I saw it on the add delete list. Did we see it on the add delete list this year?
No, I was not involved.
Oh, you sure wasn't. So I don't think it was on the add delete list because I was adding and adding and adding more than deleting and deleting this year. And I probably got popped on the hand a little too much for adding and adding. But we added, I think Counselor Thomas didn't talk about how many millions of dollars we added. But I just want to clarify that when the departments send a budget proposal, the counselors are not in those meetings. So we have no idea what is in those, in that budget proposal that you sent. I wish we would have known. That's number one. Number two, the mayor's proposed budget, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't see it. And I didn't see it on the add delete list, so we have an issue when it comes to that. And I don't know, I know Counselor Begley is looking at restructuring because he's part of that budget proposal process. But how we actually go about doing it, and I think you've made some spreadsheets and Excel spreadsheets or something. But that way, council can be a little more informed about what the department has and yourself, what you all are requesting.
Counselor Davis.
On the budget process.
Trying to find your light.
Of course, the charter is very clear about how the budget process works. The charter is very clear. And so when we have budget kickoff and then departments package their budgets and enter budgets into the system, then the budget goes through the process where the city manager works with finance and will package the budget. When we start the budget process, typically, it could be thirty, forty, fifty million beyond where the previous budget year. Thirty, forty, fifty million. And so every single department have asked. And in order to have a balanced budget with revenue to expenses, we're required by law to have a balanced budget. And sometimes you've got to take money out of the reserve in order to balance the budget. And we've had to do that year after year. And so when the budget goes to the mayor, according to charter, it becomes the mayor's budget, the mayor can tweak and do whatever he or she wants to do with the budget. And then, of course, the mayor presents his budget to the council. What we explain to department heads is, you know, if there's something that you feel you need that's not in the budget, you can appear before council at a budget review meeting, and we put departments on a list. And they can present to you. Some do and some don't. And maybe they don't because, yeah, there's a challenge. There's a challenge for department heads each and every meeting standing at that podium right now. I don't know, but they have a choice to come and stand and say, it didn't make it into the budget, and I need two secretaries. And council, you don't put things on the add delete list. The mayor and council put things on the add delete list based on them standing at that podium and making an ask. But it's an ask beyond what was included in the budget that the city manager submitted to the mayor, and the mayor submitted to council. And so you have the choice of placing equipment, personnel, whatever you want on the add delete list. And this year was a record-setting year because I think, you know, seven, twelve million, twelve, whatever it was, was added between first read and second read by this council. And so that's how the budget process work. So when you put it in your budget again, if it doesn't make it to the budget, I'm going to challenge you to come and stand there and ask them for everything because I think that's what you've been encouraged to do. And if council members want to add twelve, fifteen million dollars, that's a council decision. So, but that's how the process works.
I feel like sometimes we have more need than we have money. Oftentimes, we have more need than we have money. However, we need, in my opinion, have a needs assessment. Like, we need to come up with some goals as the city and determine what is needed more than others. Because maybe we could have shifted five hundred thousand dollars for, you know, a new project to animal, you know, care and control. Because we need more help with doing, doing the duties. Because I didn't even know that you didn't have the inmates over there anymore. The last time I went, you know, the facility was clean. I know it's probably been a little while, but the facility was clean. It might have been a little while, but it was as I was still elected. But the facility was clean, we didn't have feces everywhere, it seemed like you had enough volunteers. But looking at these numbers, we don't have what we need based on our budget, but also based on what you're seeing in reference to the national recommendations. We are, we are not meeting the mark. However, it is, I do think that we need to be more involved in the budget process, both, and not at the, not just at the add delete. Like, if this is something that we're looking at doing for this next fiscal year, let's have a conversation. That way, we can get with our finance department and see if we can afford this and what we can afford. But we can't even have those conversations because we're not having those conversations. But we are right now. But I just wanted to make sure that the public knew, and also you, that when you do a budget proposal, the council does not see your budget proposal initially.
Well-
I, I don't. We don't until we get that mayor's-
You get the thumb drive, and the thumb drive has what they requested as well as what we brought forward.
Right. But we don't get it until then. We don't get it upfront to actually have these conversations prior and to see what deficits that we have. No, we don't. And we don't get it really in a timely manner. So, yes, we get it like-
That's Counselor Fettish in the mall.
So we, we get it, and we have to make these decisions fairly quickly instead of having a longer time to actually determine exactly what's needed. That's really where I'm going with this. Having time to determine what's needed. And we, we need that. We need to understand exactly what's going on. Because if we would have known, I think you said this was April of this year, this was before we approved the budget. So we didn't, we did not know this. We didn't.
Well, I would just say again, Mayor, the thumb drive has everything that department asks for, and then it has what's presented in the budget. You get it when you get the budget document. You, you get it at the end of May, and then the budget process goes on until the second read in June. You have it for thirty days. And they come in on add delete list, you can put them on the add delete list. But you have it for more than thirty days.
It didn't used to be a thumb drive. We just started doing that probably eight years ago, ten years ago. I know, we, we started asking for the thumb drive so that we could see, because it became evident that, you know, as, I was on council at the time, and we'd want to make adjustments, but we needed to find a corresponding delete to go along with the add. Because, and for example, if you, if you want to add personnel, then we have to find personnel or some other recurring expense, not just money from a project or from capital because you can't pay salaries going through the years with a lump sum savings one month, one year. So it's, it is a challenge. Council works hard on it. And, and that's always, that's been our resource to try to identify what was asked for and what was given. Now, we did have a meeting the other day, and I, I did say that we were going to make sure we, we put some, some more people in there.
Yes, sir. And if I can, just in all fairness to my predecessors and the city manager and everyone, Public Works is a large divi, a large department. And when you're prioritizing a department of that size, needs, animal control is not at the top of that list. I'm just being honest. It has been integrated waste, it has been paving and repairs, it has been other funds because animal control falls under the general fund, which means there's not as much money as it is in other funds. So when you're dealing with a department of that size, things like landfill equipment, things that can cause major issues throughout this community will rise to the top, and animal control unfortunately does go to the bottom.
Well, and what I will make sure, Mayor, is that every, every department head who submits, and they don't get it, I want every one of them standing at that podium giving this council the entire list.
Counselor David, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. And we did, I think we, we took on a lot of reoccurring expenses. I mean, there were some that are one-time expenses, but a lot of reoccurring expenses mainly on the judicial branch. And we've added a lot across the board, whether in the executive administration or where. We've added other positions, okay? Those are reoccurring expenditures. And, you know, we got to find new revenue to take care of those or you replace somebody else's position that we haven't filled that we're budgeting. But anyway, Ms. City Manager, the inmate help that we get, you know, I would like you to speak to that maybe, you know, or Director Shaw, Director Johnson, if y'all like to. But it's my understanding now that we're not getting that like we used to. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And what about the court-administered type help? Is that, is, are you getting any help from the courts?
Well, you, you mean community service workers.
Yes.
So with community service workers, they are sentenced by the court, but the worker themselves can decide where they want to go and do their community service. It is not a directive made by the court to say, you will go to animal control or you will go to House of Mercy, excuse me, whatever the case may be. And then, of course, they come up with reasons why they can't go to animal control. Some of them come up with medical excuses, some of them come up with, I'm allergic to animals. I mean, it's all kind of things that come out. So the court does issue community service. We're not getting the, near the number of community service workers we used to get in Public Works. But unfortunately, they can determine or they dictate- But unfortunately they can determine or they dictate where they want to do their community service.
What I hear is those two areas are not falling short. How about, talk about your, tell us a little bit about your volunteer base. Are you getting enough volunteers or how is that, how is that going? Uh, you have a lot? You have a lot willing to step up or is, is that limited as well?
Well, pretty much just like the community service. Our volunteers we do have, but they can choose where it is they want to volunteer doing, uh, what they want to do in the, in the, uh, in animal control. And most of our volunteers would much rather go out and try to help with adoption and off-site events. Which we appreciate more than anything because we are not fully staffed or at least equipped enough to be able to go out and do offsites and still run our shelter. So right now our volunteers are extremely important and they're doing a very, very great job out there with our offsite events.
Counselor Kogle?
Um, for the volunteer coordinator on here, is, is that, I'm understanding that's funded currently, right?
It is funded.
Is that something, um, that can be broken up into? Seems like we have a lot of volunteers. Every time I've been to animal control, there's a lot of volunteers and a lot of people who say they volunteer, reach out to us. And, um, there's a lot of passionate people in our community. Um, is the volunteer coordinator position something that can be broken into two positions of a part-time position? Two part-time positions? Um, since a full-time position perhaps at, that pay grade may not be attractive. But there's plenty of people who are either working part-time in our community or, um, are looking for a part-time position who are retired but don't necessarily want a, a full-time position. Is that something that we can be open to dividing into two to conquer? Two heads maybe better than one?
I would much rather keep the volunteer position as it is, um, because we do need that, that help. Unless we were to change or get additional staffing, which will allow us to have that as a, as a part-time role, I would need that as a full-time position. Because that is someone that helps out in our, um, shelter on a day-to-day basis.
But if you had two people willing to participate, then one, it would be the same amount as one volunteer coordinator. You would just have, it's, I, I, I see volunteer coordinator as a position which is very, um, community-serving. And I suspect that a volunteer coordinator, even if they were part-time, would probably be vested enough in the position to provide more than, not required, obviously. Um, but my guess would be that those volunteer coordinators, if it were two positions, would be, um, more than willing to overreach their twenty hours a week or whatever it would, would be. Um, you would still have the same amount of hours of help. You would just have two individuals putting their heads together and reaching out to the community than one individual. Does that make sense? Is there, is there a particular reason that it has to be one person?
No, it doesn't have to be just one person, but that position is filled as one person. What we're looking for is, um, that volunteer coordinator is, is used exponentially inside of our facility. They do more than just coordinate, than just coordinate outside.
Right. And I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing the, the importance of the volunteer. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, if I could volunteer at animal control, I mean, I would probably also end up with eighty dogs at my house. But, um, you know, I, I just, I just wonder if there's an opportunity for us to think outside the box here and, and, um, instead of having a zero here, maybe have a one and in brackets, have, have more people involved than just the one, so.
It's definitely a possibility. We can definitely look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Begley?
Oh, uh, just to quickly address Counselor Tucker before. Um, so on the budget process, uh, completely agree. It was not a lot of time to digest it. And the time to make changes is, is, is pretty short window. And then we get the add delete list, have to make a quick decision. So the, the change, um, I suggested that I, I presented like at ten, ten or eleven o'clock at night. So I'm not sure how many people caught it. Um, but the budget chair is, in, in January, uh, we want to send our top three to five priorities to the mayor. And, and not at the very detailed level that, at the budget, but just whether that's, uh, the courts, um, animal control, uh, maybe a grant writer, whatever kind of like our high-level priorities are. Send that in January, uh, so as they're creating the budget, they at least know where we stand. And then hopefully can incorporate our thoughts, uh, in the budget when it's, the first draft is presented.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I think we have a valuable resource in our volunteers. It costs us no money to have those volunteers in our facility. And so I consider that volunteer coordinator position to be vital. And I know that you mentioned to Counselor Kogle that what your ideal was, what you, you know, what you wanted to see in the volunteer coordinator. But I think when we're at a point in time where we're not able to keep up with our, keep our facility clean and sanitized and keep it running the way it's supposed to be running, that's the time we have to start thinking outside the box. And we have to kind of change what we might consider. Um, and so I really hope that you seriously contemplate, even if we get one part-time volunteer coordinator, you know, in that position to help, you know, be the cheerleader, be, you know, organize the volunteers. Because from the emails and the texts and the calls that I get, this city is full of people that care about that facility and want it clean, want it to be sanit- you know, sanitized, wants the animals to be cared for, not just contained. And I think you could be running a top-notch facility just through volunteer force. You need a, you just need a good coordinator that's going to be a cheerleader and, and can organize it. And when I came to the facility a few weeks ago, I spoke with someone, I'm not going to mention their name here, but I think you know who I'm talking about, who wants that position. And you're, you're running into some obstacles. And I encourage you to work with HR and break down those obstacles. Because we need our volunteers and we need to treat them with respect. And we need to just make sure that they know how appreciated they are.
Thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, are any of, do you have any part-time positions?
It's just, um. No, ma'am. I don't have any part-time positions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Davis, hang on.
I'm going to throw this out there. It may mess things up even more. But, you know, with volunteers and all of that, I know we've got lifeguards and a lot of our youth that are doing a lot of things in the community. And I was thinking more instead of part-time, full-time, more maybe hourly. I don't know, you know, kind of a opportunity to do a little work here and there, maybe on the weekend or whatever. I don't know if that's going to help a lot. But, you know, when I was a kid, when I was a kid, I worked. Yeah, yeah, that's what they used, called me my first year in the big leagues kid. But I, I worked three years at the zoo and my job was to clean bins. And, uh, fortunately the curators let me work with them on other things, which was a great learning experience. But, uh, you know, they didn't give me much, but I really enjoyed doing it and it was worth it. You know, you learn a lot those times. And, um, I don't know, I, I really don't know if there's an opportunity there. But, uh, or if it's, we're just going to terminate volunteers. But, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to let kids come in and help out and maybe reward them a little bit. I, I'm just throwing that out there.
All right. Thank you.
One of the things I also wanted to address or come back to was the number of emails or other types of communication the council has been receiving. One of them most recently has been about the, um, commenting function that has been disabled on the Facebook page. I know I've been asked about it and I wanted to speak on it while I had your, while I had your audience. The reason the disable, why the commenting functionality on our Facebook page was disabled, main reason was because all of the information that our facility was trying to put out to our community was being pushed down to the bottom of the thread. And while we had just as many upset about the commenting function disabled, we had just as many that were appreciative that it was. Because many, uh, the citizens here in Columbus, those that are concerned about animals were also looking to see what we were doing as a facility. And when we, we tell them that we had placed the information out there, their, their concern was that it, I have to search for it. So under the instruction, or should I say the, um, communication or discussion with our city attorney's office, it was best that we cut off the commenting because we were being bombarded with quite a number of emails that were outside of what we were trying to communicate. The other part, which was also most important to me, was regarding my staff. A lot of the comments that were placed on our Facebook page were anything but encouraging. And my employees, every day, were discouraged and often, oftentimes brought to tears because of some of the comments made. If nothing else, my priority is to the people that take care of the animals in that facility. And to see a lot of them discouraged, even on the verge of quitting because of what people said that they were not doing or weren't doing well enough. I needed to do something. And that was what I did and I don't apologize for it. If you go out to our Facebook page now, it is cleaner. You're able to see exactly what we are communicating and it is not a distraction. So I wanted to address that before this, this group.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Are, are the posts shareable?
They are shareable.
Okay, so, so people can go on, they cannot comment, but they can share them to their, their page and it can spread that way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I know I'm always talking about my education and, and I just took this e-government class at Columbus State University. And what concerns me is that animal control falls under Columbus Consolidated Government. And if we, um, allow comments on other government, um, social media sites, then we have, we, per, you know, law, we're supposed to keep that same level. So it, it is at the highest level. So you're supposed to remain, the comment's supposed to remain even on animal control. And I understand, look, every council up here gets, um, mean nasty notes, um, including the mayor. Uh, and I mean, it is, is, I mean, I mean, we, we get conversations about, you know, everything. And honestly, the counselors take the blunt of the work. I mean, not the work, but the, the nasty comments. So when it comes to animal control, it's call your counselor. Or, or we're not doing this or we're not doing that as the elected official. And basically what I'm saying, and I, I really, I'm going to have to get the city attorney to look into that because, I mean, I just finished this, this training and it states that if we allow comments on part of our city, then we have to allow those comments throughout all of departments. How it's set up.
Studied on the subject suggests that you, um, on each media present, you choose, presence that you choose to have as a public media presence, you determine based on the purpose of what that particular, um, site is for, you can determine whether to accept all comments or no comments. There's no in-between, but as long as you're proceeding in one of those two directions, then, um, that's perfectly legal. That's.
Yeah, I just don't want it to come and bite us in the butt because, um, if we accept comments on one level of our government, which really most levels of our government, and then we don't allow comments on another, I, I know that we start getting into the, the issues of e, e-governance. And, you know, they, I just think we need to make sure that we do diligence on how, um, we allow. Because that, because it came up, I think, one time the civic center, um, director had took a comment out. And you really will go on the borderline of that First Amendment right.
Right. Well, each, um, department is responsible for their public media presence. You know, the city as a policy could direct that all of them receive comments or none of them receive comments. But as long as it's consistently done and everyone on that website is treated consistently, I don't think there's a problem with it. But I'm happy to look at some of the information you've gotten and discuss it further with you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Counselor Begley?
So I, I, I do know council gets a lot of heat. Um, I, I, I feel like I'm more comfortable with council getting heat because they signed up for that. Like I, I don't like when, whether it's the, the finance director, the internal auditor, animal control. I, I don't like when employees are getting in tight. I feel like they didn't sign up for that, um, the same way council does. Um, but I do, I, I don't know if it's worth investigating. I feel like sometimes Facebook, you can, you can not allow people to have, make posts to the wall, but, but they can still comment. So maybe that still helps it where the posts are still highlighted. Not telling you to do that, just saying that, that might be an option to try to find some kind of midway. Uh, but I, I do understand, I, I, I don't like when the public criticizes employees. I, you know, if there is an issue with employee, I hope they would reach out to council and tell them privately. Then there's a more appropriate way to handle that, um, than the, the public just criticism.
The other part of that too, and, and I completely understand what you're saying. But the other part of that too is, is when you're allowing comments, and, and this is, I'm a citizen too of Columbus, Georgia. Anytime that I'm allowed to comment on any page, it is implied that I'm going to get a response. Our Facebook page has never been used as a communicable source, as a communication source. We never responded to anyone or ever, it is part of our policy. We do not comment on that page. In fact, we ask people if they have questions or, uh, whatever the case, they can call us directly or email us. So it was never used as a communication piece. And so, um, staying true to what it was intended for was information purposes. And therefore commenting, uh, was not valid.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Animal lovers, I'm going to talk to you right now for just a minute. Because what she's saying, I've, I've noticed it. You guys can be so, so loving towards and passionate about the animals and so hateful towards humans. And you, you need, you need to tone it down because you are not helping the animals when you, you talk and act like that with us. And it, it's all we can do. You know, we, I think you could make a difference by speaking in a tone that is helpful, not hurtful. And I think it would encourage an attitude and an environment of working together. I, I feel like it's adversarial. And let's get passionate about working together and. And that's for both of us. That's for animal control and the government as well as you that I'm speaking to. Let's tone down on the on some of the criticism and let's look for ways that we can work together. Because as I said earlier, the volunteer force is what will make our animal control facility top notch. You guys have excellent ideas. If we're working together, I think we could have the best animal care facility in the nation. So let's start trying, and I'm talking to you, Drell, I'm talking, you know, I'm talking to everybody in the room now because I think everybody that's left is is about this issue. We need to just flip the switch and look for a way that we can work together.
Thank you. All right, let's see. I know we're falling way behind here. Let's see if we can kind of catch back up.
Yes, sir. So during the audit, one of the most important parts of shelter operations is the actual information that has to be provided at the end of the month to the Department of Agriculture. The auditor that was there noticed that at the time we had multiple spreadsheets with the information that we needed to provide at the end of the month. And so she helped create one spreadsheet that would capture everything that we'd need that we could roll up at the end of the month, and it would take less time for that information to be transitioned over to the Department of Agriculture. But it does not negate the fact that we need shelter software. And it's my understanding, and of course, it was pre- previous to me coming in, but shelter software has been replaced in our budget as well several several occasions. Because everything we currently do is manually done. It's a manual process. And as careful as we are on a day-to-day basis, there is human error to consider. Now currently, we are vetting a software system that meets all of our requirements. Now, I do know that in a previous, I want to say last week in council, there was a that was brought up about Shelter Love as being one of the software systems brought to us, and it was. I actually sat and talked with several software systems. And Shelter Love, while it's probably used in most shelter operations, Animal Care and Control also has a we have operations in the field. And Shelter Love did not complement us the way that we needed. The actual system that we are looking at introducing into our system absolutely provides that. And so we are actively working with that vetting process so that that system is brought into Animal Care and Control. The other part of this audit mentioned zip code heat map. And just to give you
So one quick follow-up on the the Shelter Love. You did say that most shelters are using Shelter Love. For those shelters, how do they handle their field operations if they're not, if Shelter Love's not?
Let me further explain. Shelter Love is used by most rescues. There are municipalities that use it. I'm not negating that. But for us, what I wanted, what I wanted was an all-encompassing. The reason why is because this current system that we're using, it will be retiring pretty soon. And so we would have had to use Shelter Love and then find something else to complement our field operations portion of Animal Care and Control. The actual software system we're looking at now encompasses that. And so we will have one system where we'll be able to literally go from the front of the house to the back. And when I say the front of the house, I'm saying when the call comes in, we dispatch it out. Our officers go out to that call, whatever animals they bring back in, it comes into the house and we're able to follow that animal from beginning to end. And it will also have the capability of preparing notes and other documentation we need in the event we go to court. So it is an all-encompassing system.
And then, did I hear you specify the name of that software, the all-encompassing one? Or is it, is it in-house?
It, no, it is not in-house. It is an outside vendor. And until the contracts are done, I'd rather just leave.
Okay, all right. So you're saying it's still, we're not disclosing the vendor name?
We're in the vetting, we're in the procurement process.
Okay. Just for the argument sake, when you do make that final decision, if you can fill some kind of just sheet that shows here's the advantages of this
Absolutely.
this software versus Shelter Love, you know, price. And then the last question on it, the software, do you have a timeline on finalizing the contract, getting it implemented, getting it configured and rolled out? Do you have that timeline yet?
I do not, but I'll be willing to share that with you as soon as I do have it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna ask. Were we doing RFP process for that, or were we adding it into the next fiscal year budget?
So our IT department actually reached out to me and advised that Lotus Notes, which is the current system we're using, software system we're using, was going to be retiring soon to start vetting for a replacement. So an RFP was not done. It's actually being included into our budget.
In in the next budget. Okay, thank you.
The reporting, and I did not have the the actual reporting that we had previously was a spreadsheet as long as this room. What was condensed was what we have here now, what we do use on a daily basis is the actual reporting you see here with captures on a daily basis, how many animals we start off with, how many animals we end the day with, and how we ended up with those animals. Whether they were brought in as intake, they went out on RTOs or returned to owners, whether they were rescued, if they were cats, or if they were euthanized, and why they were euthanized. Were they euthanized at the owner's request? Was it euthanized to space? Was it euthanized, or whatever the reasons may be?
Counselor Kogle?
So on the on on the social media, when the shelter reporting, you know, the red and white boxes that come up at the end of the day or the beginning of the day reporting, how does that? How does that work? Because like the other day, the, it came out that there were four dogs that were euthanized for space, but the end-of-the-day reporting showed five runs, five of the holding runs open. Or or the, I should say, the next morning, it said, this is our opening day. This is our opening day report, and there are five holding runs that were open. But if you go back to, or say the next day, or if you go back a day, it's, you know, it says, you know, we didn't have to euthanize any dogs. And those holding runs, like for example today, I think those holding runs report that there's it's completely full, but two holding runs are open, but we didn't have to euthanize any dogs. So I'm I'm confused, and I think a lot of the public is confused on, you know, what those what those reports mean. Because, and I know that when commenting was allowed on there, that there was some conversation that went back and forth, well, we have, you know, we euthanized four dogs, but there's four runs open, so why aren't those dogs in those runs? But some, I mean, some days we have holding, some days, some days we have dogs in the holding runs and are completely full. Some days we have two dogs in a in a holding run and we're not completely full. Can you explain to, like, so when I look at it, I can go, oh, all right, I remember this conversation?
Certainly. So, one, the what you're referring to, and it's of course further down in this presentation, but it is the visual of how our runs are set up throughout the building. Our main runs is the runs that, for the most part, they're always full. There's forty runs in our facility that house our animals. The additional eighteen runs are what people are looking at. That's our holding run, our holding area. And just to give you an idea of what that is, holding is for those animals that have been brought in on the off the trucks or brought through the door. And we are trying to see if those animals belong to someone. So that's a holding area. It's temporary. That, those actual runs don't look like the rest of the runs throughout the building because it's only a holding area for no more really and truly than the day. That's how they're designed. The other two areas is our isolation. Those, that's, that area is for our, it's supposed to be for our sick animals or animals that need to be separated from the main area. Or a mother who has just had puppies, and we put them in there to isolate them from other, from other animals. And then the last area that holds six is our quarantine area. Those are our biting dogs. Those dogs have to be placed in there and on hold for ten days. And that is governed by the environmental services. So our main runs, which are the ones that are many, is forty. What you'll see on the holding area, and those most often are the areas that you'll find that are white. That means that they're empty. That area is really supposed to always be empty. Ideally, the forty runs is where all animals should be. The holding area is just a temporary place. If it is that we have, or we say, this is how we end the day, and you see two open at five o'clock on that end-of-the-day report, that means that four animals are in holding and two are empty. But what happens is that our officers, just because because we close at five, our officers still work until ten. And then, in that, in between that time, we have an officer that remains on call for any calls that may we may receive in the late evening, between ten and six AM. And it's oftentimes that we receive animals during those hours after we've closed our doors that when you open up the next morning, those runs are full.
So, okay, I mean, that's that's helpful. So if, so like if I'm, if I'm, I guess, who who updates that then to the? Are we relying on Facebook? Because if I'm, like, I'm looking at the animal control website right now, and it it says last updated eleven twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three. So how how are we communicating that to? Like, if I'm looking, if I'm looking for a dog and I and I want to go save one, and I go and and I want to look at adoptable animals, and I can look at adoptable animals, but on the, one of the first pages, it says, you know, our capacity is at sixty-nine point eight-eight percent, which I I understand takes into account the cat kennels. But if I'm if I'm looking at that and I go, oh, they're not in complete and dire need, but if I'm not paying attention, I I see that that's eleven twenty-nine. So how how do we get that updated to, like, at least a bare minimum, like a daily update?
So the capacity, what you're referring to is our capacity indicator, which is the very first thing you see. The capacity indicator is actually updated by our shelter staff. Unfortunately, I only have two. So their focus right now is to provide that capacity indicator on our Facebook page because we don't rely so heavily on our IT department to help us with a lot of areas. We will rely heavily on our IT department to help us with areas on our website. So it's much easier and faster to put the updated capacity indicator on Facebook. And we'll go back and we will update the one on.
So are you relying on, are you relying on emailing the IT department the capacity? And that's the breakdown, or is it, I mean, I was a, I have a fairly heavy web design background. And is that something that we can give them access to to update on a real-time basis? Or are we are we relying on an email that's going to IT to say to update this, or?
Well, for the capacity calendar, capacity indicator, we do have access to it. We just don't have time to update that as often as we'd like, and that's just.
Just at the, I mean, as as part of the closing protocol, can it not just be, you know, how many dogs do we have in?
Well, that's why we use our Facebook page, because it is, it is something that we stay on all day. I have only two people, and unfortunately, throughout the day, it is not, it is not.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for throughout, throughout the day. I'm just as a, as part of your closing protocol, this is how many dogs we have in the facility. This is how many cats we have in the facility, the end. Hit the button, submit, and check it off the box. It's as simple as turning the lights off, I I think, but I mean.
No, not technically, but yes, it is something that is supposed to happen as on a daily basis. But again, because we are short on that shelter staff, it is not always updated on our website, but it is always updated on our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Moving on, one of the auditors' recommendations was that we would have a reporting for our zip code. We do have one that we constantly update, and we do that through our field operations team. They help us with that because what we do now is we capture the zip codes that they're going to on calls and what they're doing at those calls. And so this is the one for November. You can see that our heavy presence right now is in the three-one-nine-oh-seven area. I mentioned the Department of Agriculture. It's been mentioned a couple times also outside of this presentation. But what I wanted to give an update to this body is what the Department of Agriculture does with the CACC. Just in my tenure here, and I've only been here just over nine months, we've been visited by the Department of Agriculture a total of three times. One was for an official inspection, of which they have to do once a year. When the Department of Agriculture comes in, they inspect the entire facility, and they either give us a pass or a fail. This is what this documentation looks like, and it is on the Department of Agriculture's website. It is, it is. The only time that we had a fail was in November, the tenth, twenty-twenty-two. And that is one of the, the only time we, the reason we failed was due to the cages we had that was housing all of the animals. And we had two weeks, I believe, to get that situated, and which they did. Another visit came behind that, which was November twenty-second. And as you can see, we passed all of the inspections. We've passed every sense. We've also had, because I did have new staffing at Animal Control, I did ask our inspector if she would come and do a training with my shelter staff on proper cleaning. And she did that. That was done this year in September. All of the individuals that attended are listed on this on here as well. She also did an inspection at that time, for which we passed.
And coun- counselors, if you would, as we go into particularly in veterinary services, if we jot our questions down, because we're getting kind of bogged down, and we want to keep it, keep it moving. So if you just jot your questions down at the end of the presentation, well, we'll, Kene will be happy to answer all of them.
Absolutely. So, the other part of her audit regarded division, the division manager in veterinary services. At the time of the audit, there was not a division manager in place and had not been for quite some time, as well as a veterinarian. Now, we do have, we still do not have a full-time veterinarian. What we have is a part-time veterinarian. And of course, I was hired in February of twenty-twenty-three. Now, veterinary services, I'm not going to pretend that I know a whole lot about veterinary services. I'm not a DVM. But we, I did ask that our part-time veterinarian, Dr. Hank Hall, would come today and speak on one of the questions that was posed to me to speak on, which was about our euthanasia policy and protocol. So I'm going to have to defer that to him. So, I'm going to have to defer that to him. Uh, for him to provide you any questions or any answers to any questions you have regarding the protocol measures we have at Columbus Animal Care and Control.
Dr. Hall, welcome, you've been very patient, we appreciate your being here.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Hank Hall, I've been in Columbus area since nineteen-seventy-six. Um, I can remember when, uh, I'm Sasserdody Lane, it was a terrible facility and. Animals were euthanized with, uh, carbon dioxide. Uh, we have obviously grown leaps and bounds from then. Uh, seeing Andrew Hughley, uh, had commandeered a flight, compliments of Betsy Lieber, you were part of that. We, at, before this facility, the Nert facility was built, uh, we all flew down trying to get the best of the best. And I compliment the folks who have hung on for this length of time. Uh, and a very important issue, we're all animal fans, owners and stuff like that, so. Um, we do not have a full-time veterinarian out there, I retired about six years ago. And, uh, was asked, uh, by Drell to just fill in and take a, pick up the slack, help where I could. I eat rabies, uh, vaccines, uh, euthanasia, uh, stuff like that. I had to get, uh, I have my own DEA license, I had to get another DEA license, cause there's a lot of drugs that are ordered. So I now have two DEA licenses, um, and try to help out in, in those areas, so. We will say that we are in compliance from the American Veterinary Association, uh, the type of product we use. Be it, uh, the type of solution that we use. Uh, many of the questions have arisen about tranquilization prior to euthanasia. Um, it is a, uh, it is not mandated, uh, to use tranquilization. I do lots of house calls for end-of-life procedures. Um, I choose to tranquilize because oftentimes the animal I'm euthanizing is being held in the arms of the, of the owner. And it tends to make it a little bit easier. The flip side of that, in our animals that we often deal with at the, uh, our, our shelter is basically some wildlife. Uh, you cannot, you just have to use maybe an intraperitoneal, which is in abdominal region, let it be absorbed. So are, there are different ways that euthanasia is practiced. And again, going back to the, even the, the, the word euthanasia, uh, comes from Greek. E U, u is a Greek word for good or well, than it is, uh, death. So we try to make it a, if there is such a thing, a good death, we do not want animals agonizing. Uh, and, and being uncomfortable, we try to ma- pick the process that best suits the circumstances of the animal. A fractious cat is different than a very calm cat is sitting there, you know. Whether you can get a vein, veins are a premium in many animals, if they're debilitated, injured, things of that nature. We try to make the process fit best for the animal first and of course, our staff for their safety secondarily. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have about procedures or how we do things.
Uh, uh, Counsel Tucker, do you have a question on euthanasia?
Um, no, not on euthanasia.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Dr. Hall, thanks for being here today, and I just want you to know I have a, an appreciation for the field of animal healthcare that you practice. Uh, that was my aspiration a long time ago, that's what I went to school to study until I found out I could hit a curveball. And then things changed from there, but I still have a, uh, I still have a keen interest. I know it's a very sensitive subject and, uh, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to respect that. And, and I'm not insensitive to it because I just lost one of my little ones and, um. Not long ago and, and, uh, I trusted my vet, I trusted my vet to do the right thing and he did. And, uh, and I'm glad because, you know, I could not bear to see the outcome of where my little one was heading. So anyway, in saying that, uh, I, I do wanna, I, I do wanna understand this a little bit more. The, I was surprised to learn, and I should've known this, but I was surprised to learn. During the Animal, uh, Care Act in the state of Georgia, I was surprised to learn that, uh, 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 not only. Well, it's my understanding that a veterinarian is supposed to supervise euthanasia and, but at the same time. That he does not have to administer it, that you could do, have a, a vet tech, but that person needs to be trained and still under supervision the way that I read the rules. Uh, or the guidelines, um. I don't think anybody else outside that realm is allowed to euthanize and. You know, a lot of people use different terms for that, some say putting down, when I was a kid, they used to say putting them to sleep and. You know, people use different terms, but really the med- the, the, the drugs that are being used is pretty much the same drugs that, correct me if I'm wrong, that they. Put humans to sleep when they perform medical operations and things like that, those type of drugs, am I wrong on that, or?
The euthanasia product is a, is a step further, uh, than, than say, uh, Probofol or, uh, some anesthetic agent could be used. Uh, and then you get into all sorts of levels of tranquilization, sedation, relaxation, things of that nature.
Anesthesia.
The euthanasia solution is a class-three narcotic, you have to have a DEA number to have that and to be able to order that product. Be state licensed and have a DEA license to, to, you know.
Do you do the supervision of all the animals and sign off on every one of them?
No, sir, hence goes back to the need for, and, and we have pushed for that to, to get more of a full-time veterinarian. It's impractical for one person, you cannot be there all the time. Uh, and, and for every euthanasia, everything that comes up, I get calls, uh, different hours of the day. Night even sometime, an animal comes in horribly run over, our crew has picked up the animal, brought it to the, the facility. And this animal, uh, get pictures, uh, the state of the animal, we, we talk about it. Uh, and I give my permission, uh, to them to go ahead and euthanize the animal at that point. Uh, with pictures, with an explanation, what's the extent of the injuries, that type of thing. The actual statute on, on this, uh, that you're referring to, uh, on that, a layperson. Performing euthanasia by injection must be under the supervision of a licensed veterinarian or physician. Um, this shall not be construed as to require that the veterinarian or physician be present at the time of the euthanasia.
That's right.
People that I have dealt with and trained, and so I have full confidence in them, and I am responsible for them and accept that. Uh, because they are trained, they know what to do, uh, if there's any question there, again, it's a phone call. But I am, uh, there for every euthanasia, no sir.
Who makes a determine, determination when you get a, an animal that's extremely hurt? And the chances of healing, somebody's gotta make a determination on that. Does, will, is the vet tech in position for that, or do they consult with?
Well, they always consult, they have been very good about that day or night, and, uh, this is something, you know, again, pictures, um. Where people get pictures of their grandchildren and great events, I still get those, but I get pictures of bloody poop. Uh, horrible disfiguring injuries, gross tumors that have ruptured. Uh, eviscerated animals, um, badly hit by car animals, things like that, and the decision ultimately rests with me.
You'll make that decision whether to put them down or to seek other medical, medical attention.
Medical, our, our, our whole thrust here, and again, uh, I'm reminded of, uh, the, the quote. That I, uh, jotted down, it's that, uh, people are familiar with this too and I'll butcher it, but. The nation is judged, uh, by how it treats the most vulnerable of its members, and to me, that would be the animal, uh, population. So we, we look at animals like that and if we feel like there's any shot of these animals being helped, it can go somewhere. Nationally, we're gonna refer them to a veterinarian and, uh, try to save him, that's the whole, whole purpose of what we're doing here.
Well, you know, up here, being on council, sometimes we're dealing with so many moving parts and so many different. Things throughout the city, you can't claim that you know everything about everything, but, you know, certainly there's. You know, there's time that you can do a lot of homework, I've been doing a lot of searching and, and mainly. Uh, trying to read up on this because I am concerned about what I hear in the community and what people tend to say, and then trying to match it up in the reality of what. What is going on, that's somewhat what I view my responsibility to try to understand. Uh, as far as best practices, uh, uh, you know, I. You, you mentioned the American Veterinary Medical Association that has a manual of AVMA guidelines on euthanasia. That's out there, when you read through theirs, it's a lot, but it's very interesting, and then. Not only that, but the, the Humane Society of America also has a, a, uh, a, a site out on the, on the same subject. And they tend to mirror each other and, yeah, I wanted to speak more about some of the things that we. We have heard about the, and you touched on a little bit, and if you can, expand on the, the tranquilization or the sedation of animals. I chose not to because I just felt like I, I could trust my vet, uh, and I've read a lot of differing opinions on it. But some tell you that, you know, it's a good thing to practice that the animal is under stress, heavy stress, uh, you know, there, there's issues there. Or can't control or anything like that, to settle them down, others say that, you know, it prolongs the process. And, and actually, some say that it even adds to more pain to the animal because of the chemical that's administered tends to, to burn. And if it's not done effectively, then it could prolong that, that whole process versus go ahead and. You know, like I spoke to you before, my understanding, like anesthesiology, you, you just go to sleep and. Uh, can you speak to that, cause I am concerned, uh, are there cases that you can do it, do we do it, do, does animal control do it? Do you recommend it, I mean, you speak from your knowledge about, am, am I kinda laying the subject out a little bit for you?
Sure, no, that's fine, yeah. Um, again, there are, there are different ways to administer, um, any kind of drug, including euthanasia. Uh, first, by choice and recommendation is, uh, intravenous injection, which is strictly for euthanasia, put an animal to sleep. You go into a vein, um, and do it intravenously. Now, some of that animal may be old, it may be debilitated, veins are a premium, so you can, there are other routes of administration. Uh, even sub-Q, uh, intraperitoneal, intra-cardial, if the animal is sedated enough or debilitated enough. Or comes in already in a coma, uh, to do that. To address yours with the tranquilization that can be used, and tranquilization can be from, uh. I do with people with fireworks and they have, they wait until the last second and it's the fourth of July and my animal's freaking out. Okay, get some Benadryl, get anything to take the edge off of, so tranquilization can go from just something very mild to something quite heavy. What we use is a combination of products, uh, ketamine hydrochloride and another one is xylazene. And those can be used in combination, but, uh, as you mentioned, that is, that carries with it an injection, usually an intramuscular injection. It'll take about five minutes to get into the system where the animal becomes sedate and quiet and can be calmly, you know, put down. Uh, most recently, uh, and before council for quite a while was the issue of Cowboy, the, the dog that had bitten someone and ended up losing part of the limb. Uh, I personally put that dog down, following every guideline that we had and the parameters and whatever. But again, we had to restrain the dog, give him an intramuscular injection and wait a good five minutes before he was just totally down. So we could finish the product and, and the process itself. Um, I do this, as I mentioned, uh, thousands of times in homes. And you're, you've got an animal, oftentimes the animal is either in the arms or I've done it on their own bed. The owner's bed, the dog's bed, any way we wanna do it that they feel comfortable. You give an injection like that, several things can happen. Uh, the, all of us in this room that have had an anesthetic event are always asked to be NPO. Nothing, no, no food or water for at least twelve hours, a lot of the calls I get, we need to do it now, or. Uh, even if I have the latitude to say, okay, we're gonna set this up for Friday, I don't ask for that, uh, even though it may cause some vomiting. Uh, it, the dog or cat becomes apprehensive, why can't I have my meal, why am I not giving some water? Uh, but you can run into that, and that can kinda freak people out, they don't want their animal going out feeling sickly or vomiting. Uh, in many cases, um, I say many, one out of a better two hundred or so, uh, will cause a mild seizure. Some of them are like me, they're kind of a control freak and they kinda fight it a little bit and it can trigger a mild seizure. The very thing that causes seizure is the, the tranquilizer, uh, anesthetic agent, and it's the very thing that brings them out of the seizure. But it can still be a little freaky to the people, so there are pros and cons to, you know, sedating prior to any kind of a, a euthanasia process like that. You just have to kinda pick your spot, it is not a perfect, uh, world, it's not a perfect scenario. Even, uh, the best of us with, uh, intravenous injections, there's days I couldn't buy a vein. And yet, uh, you know, we just have to kinda work with it, luckily the people we have, uh, unfortunately do the number that we do and the practices they get. Um, basically, um, you know, it makes it a, a quicker situation like that. But tranquilization and, and relaxation ahead of time for a lot of vets, uh, through, uh, vets on our advisory board, uh, feels the same way like that.
Well, you're almost reading some exact languages in the guidelines and, you know, what the, uh. I told you the Humane Society of America puts out as far as medical opinions, I mean, I've read some theories that it could take anywhere. You said five minutes, but it could take longer and be very painful for the animal, I don't know, I mean, I would have to trust my, my vet in those cases. But they did say that there's other side effects, do you use, uh, um. Do you use like topical anis- uh, I guess you would call them painkillers or to, before you.
No, sir.
Insert needles and things like that?
If anything, you could use a tranquilizer, I've had folks come by to, uh, pick up a tranquilizer, like you travel from here to the beach or four or five hour trip. You'd sedate the dog a little bit with ace pumazine, typical drug like that to take the edge off of. Um, and, you know, just, just give them a more calm status like that, but not a, uh, it's impractical to think of any kind of a, uh, injection. Uh, like to deaden it topically, to do it like another injection on top of that, that'd be kinda counterproductive.
Yeah, it, it does use the word rapid and most, um, I guess acceptable method, but. Do you make the call on those when, when an animal, I mean, a situation where an animal might need that, I guess that's what I'm hearing, you might need it, might not, or versus just the, the.
Basically, it's, it's on a day-to-day basis and, and understand, we're not dealing with, I go to these homes, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good. You know, uh, it's calm, it's, uh, whatever, I leave my phone in my truck, I don't want any distractions. They're calm, the, the owners are prepared for it and it's, uh, it's a different situation than we deal with at any shelter. You go into our shelter and you can't hear yourself speak, I mean, you have to, you know, it's why we have them in a quieter area. But they're still surrounded by that aura of noise and barking animals that, that you hear from the minute you walk in the door. So it's a, it's a different scenario, uh, and can freak some dogs out more so than others.
Mayor, I don't know if my colleagues have any questions on this subject, if not, I want to switch, okay, then I'll yield. I, I wanna come back to, uh, just actually more of the healthcare on the animals versus euthanasia.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Kogle?
Um, well, I think I'm, I'm gonna ask, actually ask about healthcare, Glenn, so, um. Dr. Hall, thanks for, thanks for coming, um, I was the one that asked you to be here, so I know it's hard to get here during the holiday season, so thank you for taking time out of your day. Um, the, how, how, how often do you visit, um, Animal Control on like a weekly or monthly basis? Are you there often or just as, as needed?
Minimally three days a week, sometimes I'm there every day of the week, sometimes I'm there for thirty minutes, sometimes I'm there for two, three hours.
So, I, I'm, and one of the reasons that, um, I, I just wanted to hear it straight from you of. Um, and I know a lot of my colleagues get a lot of the same, uh, emails as, as I do, uh. And, you know, start, I think it sort of snowballed, started snowballing from Cowboy and then there were some, um. Other dogs at, um, three or four, there's Kane and, uh, Pancake and, uh, some other, some other dogs that, um. You know, have, have come in with broken legs or, or have been shot or, um. All different situations and, uh, most recently, uh, there was this dog Bristol. And, uh, this was probably the fourth or fifth dog that had come across my email, um, in like a, probably a three-week span or so. And I thought, you know, um, I didn't have any. And I thought, you know, I didn't have anything to do that day. And I thought, you know what, this is, this is, I'm an animal lover, and maybe to a weak point. And so I went down to animal control and saw Bristol. And she was in the volunteer room, and staff was, you know, I walked in and looked around at animal control and talked with some of the volunteers that were there at the time. And she was, from my understanding, had been there for 17 days already and was in obvious pain. And the, I asked a couple of questions to staff of whether or not she, you know, was on any painkillers or what was happening. And there seemed to be some miscommunication that she was either in labor or there was something going on because she was bleeding from her abdomen. And the response was, well, she's aggressive. And maybe this is going to turn out, Stere Storytime with Counselor Kogel here. But, you know, it was, it was obvious that she was aggressive because she was in extraordinary amount of pain. And so, do you, she had been, if she had been there for 16 or 17 days, are you prescribing pain medicine for these dogs? I mean, at what point do, you know, and in the last two or three weeks as well, there's been other dogs that have come across my email with broken legs that have been sitting in the back, double broken legs, one broken leg, broken legs in the back. Like, are you making the call, at like, at what point do we put a dog down? And at what point do, are we waiting for a rescue to pull them? Or are they on pain medicine? This dog was not very happy.
Sure. Um, to start with, when I go out there, my days normally Monday, Wednesday, Friday that I go out there. I was out of town all last week, so we lose a week of stuff like that. Basically, on a cruise, we're not, have pictures and stuff like that. But all of that to say, when I get there, they'll have a list of dogs. I need you to look at these five dogs. And we go back through the run, I'll take a little notebook. We go back through there, and okay, we're swollen, we've got a swollen leg, we've got an obvious puncture wound, it's a dog bite, or it's whatever cause of etiology. And we'll go, okay, well, obviously, run number 43 needs, he needs, he needs an antibiotic, he's swollen, he needs the antibiotic, he needs maybe an anti-inflammatory, and always something for pain. So these are just deregurbed things that they'll go through on the dogs that have come in. Since I've last seen them, anybody with a broken leg, it's, even if it's three-legged, and the leg could be amputated, prefer to a vet. Part of this gets into this whole situation of, during COVID, we were, had the luxury of, people were adopting animals out, we didn't have to have quite the population. Now, people are thinning it back to work, and some of these dogs are being brought back in, maybe not the same ones, but people are having to go back to work. They're dumping these animals that also, the tragedy of Christmas, they dumped the old dog, who's been good and faithful forever, for that cute little puppy, Christmas puppy. But the point being, all of that is that what we try to do with an animal that's injured, and is that injured, that he needs to be seen by a vet, he's, I mean, that's the recommendation. Get him to a, take him to a veterinarian. And some of these cases change, some of these animals come in, they, okay, he got bumped or whatever, then he can't walk, or he can't get up and go. I mean, it's beyond the facility capabilities that we have here. This is a, it's an animal shelter. It was not built to really provide that many veterinary-type services, almost like a holding thing. It's a, we get them in, we try to stabilize them, hopefully the owner's looking for the dog. With all the social media, now there's been huge help as far as, you know, posting these animals that are in here, is this your animal, please come and get him? Or people hopefully looking for the dogs coming out there and say, the old day, he had to show up physically, or fallen every day, he was brown, and this, that. So, I mean, that has helped tremendously. But any animal gets directed treatment from the time they enter, if that's indicated.
So, is it, so is it fair to say, as our city vet, that your job is to triage the situation until, and then our, and Counselor Kogel, I mean, Counselor Kogel, Counselor Crabbe has said this before, you know, and I completely agree with her, that we're not in the, we're not in the business of being an animal shelter. We're, I mean, we are, we are animal control, and we rely heavily, heavily on paws and animals' SOS, et cetera, et cetera. So is it fair to say that you just triage, and then somewhere along the line, we have a breakdown of what to do with that animal once it's been triaged and stabilized?
Correct, and we hopefully have, you know, our people that help volunteer and get these animals out to animal SOS, there's a bunch of different groups that help us get them, you know, get them out, fundraise for them, get them to the vet, things of that nature. So the triage is correct, that's basically as I see my job. We're not doing surgery, we're not, you know, doing any sewing of lesions or anything like that. But get them started on antibiotics, pain medication, things of that nature.
I guess we just need to figure out how long we hold the dog in that position. And I don't think 17 days is probably appropriate.
No, that's excessive, and that was probably, some of these lesions started showing up afterward, some of these things that we don't really know the extent of its swollen. We can barely even palpate or feel something, some of the swelling goes down, now you can see different things. But any kind of fracture, any kind of a laceration, it needs, you know, sewing up. Sooner you can do it, the better. So it is a triage situation, it's not built for, you know, and some of the previous conversation here was with, when we built, they built the place that we're currently in, the budget was $4 million. And we're thinking, okay, we're looking good, we've got a good thing going here. Boom, last meeting with the budget thing came, it was $10 million, from four to two. And we lost some, if you've been out to the facility, some of the food trucks, things that you came and designed to drive all the way around it, now you can only get in and out because of the expense. There were some things that had to be changed, but there was no real treatment area or vet room or medical room per se put aside for our current facility because we aren't just getting them in, getting them off the streets, hoping to get them back to the owners, and then getting them to a veterinarian. So it's triage at best, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, Mayor Protem Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an executive session, and we have some folks here from out of town. And I was wondering if, City Manager, would you mind if we bring Ms. Johnson back and adjourn and have the executive sessions? Because they've got flights, they've got to catch.
Not a problem.
Just, okay.
Not a problem.
So I would move, we would go executive session. There's a motion, motion and a second.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't want to hold Dr. Hall any longer. I don't know if you're done with?
Well, I think, Glenn has two questions to ask, if we can make them short, please. All right. We'll find out.
Thank you, Mayor, Dr. Hall. Okay, specifically speaking, there were two animals, and I don't, I'm not on the names like a lot of my colleagues. But one with a broken hip, and then there was another one that had a gunshot wound. You're telling me that both of those animals were triaged, that there was pain medication, antibiotics that were given to those animals as soon as that was found out?
Yeah.
That took place?
Yes, sir.
And after that was done, it was just waiting for a facility that either could do a procedure or a determination how bad the problem was? I didn't know, you used to talk about a broken hip, I thought it might have been a spot injury or whatever that could have been a problem, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know those things.
Broken hip, I mean, you could, a dog limping, is it a broken hip? Is it luxation, is it, is he just sore? And radiographics could be involved to do that, which is beyond the scope of what we have there. And it's, I mean, always you recommend the best that you can do on every single animal that comes through like that. But again, it's about, I mean, we're limited to antibiotics, pain medication, steroids, things of that nature. But they're all looked at and tried to make comfortable until we can get them seen.
The same happened with the animal that had the gunshot wound, that was, looked like it was in pain, pretty much in pain. Is that just part of what it was experiencing, or was there a way to actually mitigate that problem?
They were started immediately on any kind of thing for pain. We use a product called Carprofin, which is basically Remedil, generic Remedil. But it's, you get that on board right away. Dexamethasone is always in my stable. And my people out there that help me the most with administering the drugs like that, they'll already have a protocol, we want to get him started on this, that, and the other. And the answer is always yes. So they pretty well know what the protocol is for those that come in that, you know, that need some treatment and need something to keep them out of discomfort and pain.
Do you feel like you have enough medical supplies and drugs and things to administer the animals out there?
No, we always have a need for more.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
No, last question, Counselor Tucker, quickly.
Are we spaying and neutering all the dog? So, I see, and the reason why, because 31907, I know is mostly, I guess, my district, and it had the most animals coming in. And I actually had a call from a constituent that lived off Forest Road, where it was a pit bull that was aggressive, had just had puppies, and attacked a cat or something like that. And she spoke with you, and she said, thank you, that you had helped her. She called me crying, she was upset. But I do think, especially because most of the animals that we are picking up have some element of pit bull in them, and I just, I really think that we have to be responsible with spaying and neutering. And I didn't know how, and, you know, in reference to Dr. Hall, are we spaying and neutering? Is that part of your duty? It's not, so what we, yeah. So we have the voucher program, so in a spirit of transparency, all the animals that come in, leave when they're adopted with a voucher, if they're not already spayed or neutered. And it is to help in getting them spayed and neutered. What happens is our field officers are tasked with going out and within the 30 days of those animals being adopted from our facility to ensure that those individuals have gotten those animals fixed.
Okay, I just feel like I hear Bob Barker in my head about, you know, yeah, spay and neuter.
We want it happening as much as everyone else in the community. Unfortunately, we do not have the services at our facility to provide that to all of the animals before they leave. That's why we have the voucher program.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to, Dr. Hall, thank you for being here, sir. We know you've waited a long time. We appreciate you clearing some of this up and providing some of this information. And we'll, yes, sir, we will, thank you. And we'll reconvene, convene this discussion after the executive session. Right now, though, I'll entertain a motion to, we've got a motion to go into executive session and a second to discuss property acquisition and disposal. Okay, and, yeah, and visitors, if y'all, for those of you, you wanted another three minutes, if you'll come back after this executive session, we'll get that for you, okay? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, if we would clear the chambers? All right, we are back in regular session. Thank you for your patience, we have been in executive session. And we discussed property acquisition and property disposal. No votes were taken. We're going to continue with our agenda. I regret that we're not going to continue with the animal control audit today. We will bring them back, but we are going to allow the folks that wanted their extra time to speak, to speak. But right now, we're going to move into the clerk's agenda. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Council Barnes from the fifth in today's meeting.
Motion to approve items one and two, is there a second? There is a second, so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number, item number three, this is a resolution canceling the proclamation sessions for January 2nd, February 6th, and March 5th of 2024.
All right, it's a motion, second to approve item three. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Item four.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? Motion, second to receive Mr. Rowetter's letter resigning from his seat as the District 8 Representative on Public Safety Advisory Commission. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, there's a motion to receive the minutes and the second. Any of these minutes, anybody like pulled or to discuss? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are received.
Next, we have board appointments, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting for the Historic and Architectural Review Board. We have the seat of Marjorie Molly Smith. This is the historic district resident seat, she is eligible to serve another term. Mayor Protem has renominated her, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next council meeting. We also have Libby Smith, this is the historic district resident seat as well. She is not eligible to serve another term, therefore this seat is open for nominations. Then we have Reverend Curtis West, this is the Liberty Cultural Center, Inc., recommendation. It is open for nominations. I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, he was one of the three originals that were left on the board.
Counselor, turn your light on.
When we redid the board, there were three members left on the board, he was one of the three. And we announced that he had moved, and we accepted the two that were left over, and then we filled in the rest of the slots.
Yes, that was for the Liberty Cultural Center Theater Board that you're making reference to. This one, this one is, I'm sorry, this is for the?
Okay, got you, I just heard his name, okay.
Right, right.
Thank you.
And so, as you know, the Liberty Cultural Center, Inc. is no longer in existence or is inactive. And so council will have to make a determination on how to fill this seat. Next, we have the tree board, we have the seat of Troy Keller. This is the educator seat, and Counselor Kogel is going to be nominating Clifton Rule for the, for this seat, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting.
Excuse me, Senator, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. So if the Liberty Cultural Center, Inc. is no longer active, then wouldn't this seat just be removed? Do we need to make a motion to just remove that seat?
Well, this board was created by ordinance, and so this would, there would have to be an ordinance change in order to change that.
Okay. Counselor Huff?
Yeah, what it is, he moved, and he was on two boards. So what we need to do is get in contact with the Liberty Cultural Center Board and have them to nominate somebody for that seat, for the, what's that, Historical Architecture Review?
And Counselor Huff, that was the, that was the board, and this is, this is the organization, the Liberty Cultural Center, actual organization, and not this present Liberty Theater Cultural Arts Board that the city recently created, that the council created.
Right, didn't?
And so if the council wants to change it to where the board, the new board, makes that recommendation, then that would have to be an ordinance change.
I just thought that the board had a representative with Bihar.
Not this new board, not this, not the new board that the council just established.
Yeah, I'm, keep talking, I'm trying to figure it out, too.
Okay, so this is about a position on the Historic and Architectural Review Board. And it, and it has to come from somebody from the Liberty Cultural Center, Inc., which is dissolved. So we would have to make some kind of a motion or a resolution to change that from the Liberty Cultural Center, Inc. to the Liberty Theater Board.
Okay, I agree with that.
Can I make that motion?
That was correct.
That's what, that's the motion.
It would have to come back on first reading and.
Call for the ordinance from there.
Call for the order?
Call for the ordinance to make that change and then the city attorney's office can bring, bring it forward on first reading.
Okay.
Yes, that board's described in the UVO, so that would have, those provisions would have to be changed.
Okay, so you'll work on that? Thank you.
Okay.
But we were still wanting to know who would replace that seat, whether it's the new committee, whether it's another historic district resident, whether it's specifically Liberty.
No, it needs to be somebody from the board, from the Liberty Board.
Okay, you want someone from the.
Because it's a historical structure.
Okay.
All right, I think we got it straight.
Okay, then we have one other seat, Mr. Frank Tommy. This is the residential development seat. It is open for nominations. Next, I have some upcoming board appointments. We'll have the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is council's appointment. Building Authority of Columbus, council's appointments. We have Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters. This is the mayor and council appointments. We have the Civic Center Advisory Board, council appointment. Community Development Advisory Council, this is council's appointments. And the Planning Advisory Commission, this is council's appointment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Hang on, we got a couple of councils. Counselor Crabbe?
For the Planning Advisory Commission, I had given you a name. Do you have that down as a nomination for that board when it comes available?
I will have to go back and check and see what that name was, but yes, I will present it as well as your nominee for a seat on this board.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Huff?
Yes, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge should come to the mic for just a second. We had spoken earlier. Mr. Afonso Dean that I referred to as the Mayor of Bunker Hill, I forwarded an email to Deputy City Manager Hodge and he sent an email to Counselor Thomas and Counselor Begley and myself and he just wanted an update on what we're doing as far as the constant maintenance of Fort Bennett streetscape and everything. He says we spent way too much money not to maintain it.
Yes, so I have referred that email to Director Short. Public Works is responsible for the maintenance after the construction is completed and the one-year period is over and so we'll get an update to Mr. Dean on the maintenance plan for that area.
Because he stated that it's doing pretty well around the Spencer High School area, but moving up, it seems to be the grass is growing a little high.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk, is that it? Thank you. We have a couple of people that had requested an additional three minutes. First is Ms. Sandy Gunnels. Appreciate your patience. I'll get you next. All right, Ms. Gunnels, same, same thing.
I apologize, y'all are just now getting the handouts, then in my joy and hurriedness of being here, I forgot to give to you, so when I was referring slides, I do apologize. And I hope I'm starting where I left off because I was a little shocked when we stopped how we did. So, and we were talking about cleaning at CAC and again, I'm speaking specifically to Parvo and the transmission thereof. It was discovered and has documented over and over. You've got emails in your packet of people who, who saw, I have other names also, but they're not cleaning the solid waste, the poop, out of the kennels before they do that. The cleaning with the, the hose and therefore there is spread of the disease that is growing in the feces. Pause on the eight-two email, I'm just going to real briefly, said during the Parvo meeting, office was taken by Ms. Johnson when it was suggested that CAC kennels and trucks were not being cleaned properly, but it was also argued and admitted that due to workload, trucks and kennels could not be cleaned after every dog and before a new dog was put in there. So because of their workload, they're having to go out, pick up a dog, bring it back. They don't clean the trucks, the kennels on the trucks before they go back out, put another dog in. So if they pick up a dog who's infected with Parvo, deliver it to the, to CAC and go get another one, they're not cleaning the trucks in between, they're not cleaning runs in between the kennels. Sally Smith picks up her dog and it leaves, Joe Smith dumps his dog, it goes into a kennel. That kennel may not have been cleaned between those. I failed to mention, I volunteer for just about every animal rescue we have in the area and one of the things I do is I foster sick dogs and Parvo survivor puppies. I fostered over 20 Parvo survivor puppies this year. That means probably another 40 died at the vet, at CAC, at whatever. Some of those dogs we adopted out to citizens and they got sick after the citizens got them home, but when you go back, you can, remember that incubation I was talking about? Three to five days? And the last slide that you will see was the last puppy that I have fostered this year with Parvo, so I've got my fingers crossed because it's been a month since I've gotten another one. This little girl, Akira, was supposedly vaccinated with good vaccine, which we know dogs weren't given the appropriate dose at times. We know that they, that expired vaccine was used. She was adopted by a single mother with four kids who wanted to get, buy her kids a puppy or adopt one. Dog broke with Parvo, the day after she got home with the puppy, mom could not afford a vet. So she came to my house and I gave her ibuprofen and saved her.
Thank you so much.
So cleanliness is next to godliness, if y'all remember.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Elamine?
Can I have a follow-up question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, hang.
Oh, and, and maybe this is for, for Drell, do we have a quarantine area? Do we have a quarantine place that we can isolate in our current facilities?
Is that more of a Drell question?
I believe we do, but Drell. Okay, I can follow up with her. Yeah, they left. All right.
All right, Ms. Elamine?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to watch you work, I'd say, this city and its finances and other operations is not easy to understand and I appreciate that you all take the time to do that and you do it with, I think, mostly seriousness. But I had asked Captain Stinson to tell me, in addition to how many actual evictions were done, how many actual dispossessories were done? And she sent me an email while you've been meeting saying, 7,117 dispossessories filed between January 1 and today. They run a tight ship. They're doing everything they can, but I know whoever's got rental property, who's filing dispossessories, you're losing a lot of money because everybody has figured out that they can't get to them for months. So when they slap that thing on your door, you know you got months of your landlord not getting any rent from you before they come to throw you out. And most of the time, I hope all these thousands upon thousands of people are getting it together so they get out before they get set out, but there is no way this is good business. Real estate folks losing a lot of money. 7,117 dispossessors filed so far this year. This is a crisis, not just for the people being evicted, for the people who trying to make money on renters. It's a mess, gotta clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elamine. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater, Senior.
I came up this morning, it was good morning, now it's good afternoon, almost another hour or so be evening. I just want to continue where I was, where I, where I stopped at. I called it a public crucifixion of a city employee. Now, I got four representatives on this council. I've got two of them that have given me an S. personal cell number, but I should have four. So I'm going to come back next meeting and we're gonna, I'm going to ask you, you have some extra money. To give every counselor a business phone, there is no reason that I should not be able to call you. I hear you talk about my constituents saying this and they saying that, well, I'm a constituent too and I will call you. Now I'm going to appeal to your patriot, patriotic sense. If you look at the flags behind you, each one of them has blue. Why you think that is? And every flag that, that's produced in this country, blue represents honor. Now what I heard this morning, when I came back, I mean, when we came out and we heard Deputy City Manager Hodge come up with that, that response, you guys got to have some honor now. You've got to apologize. You have to. You made it, you made it and I agree with you, Councilman Davis, none of it should have been presented. Not the audit from last week, nothing today, until you had all the information. But it's too late, cats out the bag, now you got to work with it. And the only way you can save face, this is not Russia, this is not North Korea, this is not a country where you don't talk, this is America. If, I, I am a constituent, whether I live on Standing Boy Road, or Casita Road, or Lumpkin Road. If you represent your constituents, you've got to make a decision now. You've got to have some honor. Got 50 seconds and I'll say this and I'll be out of your way. There is a status in this community that says us versus them. We've got to get rid of that and I truly mean that. It's always us versus them. Now, you all are not the sole reason for that, but you can stop it because citizens look at you and say, well, if they're divided, we can be divided. I love this country, I love this state and I love this city. Govern well, my friends, govern well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. All right. Ally, did you have something else for three minutes? I noticed you still staying around, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I know, we're looking to get to, but yeah, just a few things. Just a few small matters that were talked about. One of them was, you know, that you had all talked about the volunteer coordinator position and I got where you were going with that and very much appreciated that, but I was, wanted to suggest that you might look into what that job actually consists of and what it consisted of with the person who recently left, because I think it's not what you might think when you think of a volunteer coordinator job. It's, my understanding is it's more that person is treated as another additional kennel staff, kennel staff with animal care intake and killing animals, that type of a thing. And so it's not, I, I would much prefer to see it be the type of position that you seem to be thinking of when you're thinking of it, but that's not how it's functioning in practice and I believe that that's what got the reaction that you got when you had made the wonderful suggestion to make it two part-time jobs. Another thing is that I hadn't gotten an answer about the rabies and I, I'm going to send an email because I did in the hall have an opportunity to ask Ms. Short and Ms. Johnson about it and they wouldn't answer me and suggested that I email, so I'm going to be emailing them, you and Dr. Hall and I'm going to be attaching the documentation that I put in your files because I think it's important that we get an answer to that if Dr. Hall is personally. They're vaccinating all the animals and if he is, why is it that there are animals vaccination records on dates that he wasn't there according to his invoices and his time sheet? So, just so we all understand what's going on there. And then finally, I really appreciated what you had said, Counselor Crabbe, about that this town has a lot of, this city has a lot of animal people that all would love to see us have a good shelter and a good method of taking care of the animals and if we could all work together, that would be wonderful. And I very much agree with, with that and I think that, that that's just going to keep growing if we have anything to say with, about it. And also wanted to add the, the comment about animal people being hateful. I mean, it's certainly not ever our intention to be that way and I feel like there might be a tendency to kind of group animal people together as, into one group of, oh, you animal people. And I would just ask if you would just recognize that, you know, every, the animal people are constituents just like everyone else and we're all individuals and you might get some, some, you know, not very nice emails and things like that, but to, but to put them in a group and say, y'all are this one way, I feel like might not be the, like, it might be better to look at it as you're all constituents, kind of the way you do when someone comes forward and talks about crime, you see this person as an individual, that person. And I just would like you to recognize that there's a bunch of people in this community that care about animals and everybody's different, we might all have different opinions and I truly hope that we could all work together to make this a much better facility. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there any other business needs to come before the council? I hear a second to that. Nobody wants to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, wake up, motion and a second, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Merry Christmas, y'all. This.